Good morning, everyone. It is nine, it's 9:06, okay? But it's 9:06 or 7:00. Welcome to today's committee of the whole. I'd like to begin with an acknowledgement of the tragic shooting that took place just a few miles from here in Monterey Park at a New Year's celebration this weekend and the one in Des Moines and Half Moon Bay, all within the last 72 hours, and Oakland. And our hearts break for the victims, their families, and the communities sensibly targeted by this terrible act of silence. And I'd ask that we think of all these victims and take a moment of silence for the 11 people who lost their lives in this weekend's attacks just a few miles from here and those up and down the state and in the country, and we'll honor their memories. Thank you. I also want to reiterate this board's repeated calls for stricter gun control laws to finally bring an end to these tragic events that happen far too often and shatter the sense of peace and safety that everyone should have in their communities while gathering, learning, worshiping, dancing, and just going about their lives. It may be a bit incongruous to now do the pledge of allegiance, but I think that the fifth graders from Braddock Elementary who will recite the pledge in both English and Mandarin will remind us why this is a time where we still can be hopeful. So thank you to their teachers, Ms. Long and Ms. Sarah, as well as Principal Lopez of Braddock Elementary School for making this video possible for us this morning. And Mr. McLean, can you play our pledge?
Hi, I'm Kiomi.
Hi, I'm Shonteen.
Hi, I'm Daisy.
Hi, I'm Coral.
Hi, I'm Oscar.
We are from Braddock Drive Elementary School.
Please stand with your right hand over your heart, ready to begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. 拜
Thank you, or xie xie to the students and teachers and community at Braddock Drive. And I would like to wish everyone a happy Lunar New Year. Lunar New Year is a celebration of the arrival of spring and the beginning of a new year on the lunar solar calendar. Millions of families around the world, including right here in LA Unified, have participated in festive celebrations as they reunite with immediate and extended families. So happy New Year to all. As folks know, Mr. Schmelzner was recently elected as the new Vice President Committee of the Whole Chair at last week's annual meeting. And I appreciate he has requested that I support this transition and lead this week's COW as the outgoing chair. That's why I am sitting here. But I'm happy to support the team and chair this final committee of the whole for the year before handing over the reins at the end of this meeting to Vice President Schmelzner. So for today's COW, we're going to hear first any labor partners we may have and then discuss the 2122 audited annual financial report, then hear an update on the governor's proposed budget and advocacy, before diving into a discussion about the newly released and proposed instructional calendar. Following that, we will hear a progress update on the Smarter Balanced Assessment and National Assessment for Educational Progress, the S-BAC and the NAEP, before we wrap with public comment. For those speakers already on the line or watching at home, we hope to get to public comment around 12:30-ish if all goes according to plan. So we do have a packed agenda, and we'll dive right in. Mr. McLean, do we have any labor partners who wish to speak?
Not at this time.
Okay. Well, with that, we do have up our audited financial report. I know that Mr. Hart, our chief finance officer, was maybe going to introduce Mr. Joseph Moussa, but I don't see Mr. Hart. So I'm going to ask Mr. Moussa just to come up and introduce yourself, and we'll go through this audited annual financial report. So thank you so much for joining us.
Good morning, members of the committee. Thank you so much for having us. As a very general introduction, my name is Joseph Moussa, audit partner with Simpson and Simpson CPAs. We're currently the independent auditors for LA Unified. With us, she wasn't able to make it, she's a bit under the weather, Grace Yun, she served as the engagement partner. And I served, I am an engagement partner, but I served as the field manager, so equally qualified to be able to give you guys an update in terms of the results this year. All right. So as a general introduction, you know, why are we here? What is this for? What are some of the requirements for the audit? As you'll see here, ED Code 41020 requires that LEAs obtain an annual independent audit of their financial statements. Now, embedded within that requirement are also requirements for state reporting, federal reporting. These are essentially programs that the district have that are state and federally funded. Those are also areas that we review. The district has contracted our firm, Simpson and Simpson CPAs, to perform this audit annually. All of the disclosures that are necessary within what we're going to be reviewing today, the audited annual financial report, I'm going to be referring it to the AFRA, just so that it's a bit easier to get through. But the AFRA really contains everything that's necessary in order to be compliant with this requirement of the ED Code and also the requirements of the State Controller's Office. Now, statements on auditing standard 114 is kind of a crafty area where it requires us as auditors to be able to come to a governing board and to have free ability to tell you how the audit went, right? Without any kind of interruption by anybody in between. So this is kind of our chance to be able to come here and let the committee know or board members know the results of the audit. So SAS 114 is pretty much what we're going to be going through today in terms of some of those required communications and also be providing a general overview of how the audit went. Now, I know that Mr. Hart prepares this kind of timeline for the board where it gives everybody an idea in terms of where we are fiscally. I think one of the areas that he wanted to highlight here is currently the governor's proposed budget for '23-'24, in addition to the announcement of school carryover. And then, of course, what we're here to do is to present the AFRA for fiscal year '22. Now, just very quickly in terms of the agenda, we're going to spend quite a bit of time on the executive summary where we're going to be reviewing the results of the AFRA, results of our federal and state compliance audit. We'll talk a little bit about our responsibilities as auditors. We'll be looking very quickly at some financial highlights and certainly would be very open entertaining questions that anybody in the committee may have. Okay, so to give some context in terms of our audit, in June 2021, the Board of Education approved a $20 billion budget for the fiscal year '22 audit. It would be, it wouldn't really make too much sense for me to try to explain how vast this process is, right? Everybody here is so very involved in the budgeting process and all the elements that come to play. But to give everybody a sense of how big the audit is, looking at a $20 billion budget as it pertains to the overall audit, and what does that contain? 22 funds. When we look at the governmental funds, we're looking at the general fund, district bond fund, bond interest and redemption, in addition to some of the what we call non-major funds, which are your special revenue funds, capital projects, and debt service. Certainly, your COVID funding, spending, and resources are currently being tracked in your general fund and special revenue fund, but that's really what's being included in the audit in which we conduct. So to say it's a vast undertaking is a bit of an understatement. Our audit begins generally in February or March, and it really ends mid-December. So we're talking about 10 months of audit that's occurring. Every facet of LEUSD's organizational structure has a role to play in this audit. When we're talking about schools, teachers, administrators, they play a role. The individuals here at Boljory play a major role, in addition to other satellite locations. So it's a very vast undertaking. Our goal as we present the AFRA, you have about a 251-page report. Obviously, we're not going to be able to give you such a detailed review over those results, but my goal is to provide the committee today with what they need to know in terms of the results this year. And that's what we're hoping to be able to accomplish in our audit. So with that being said, we're going to look over three elements of our audit, which I mentioned before, financial audit, the federal audit, and state compliance. So starting off with the financial audit and looking at our responsibilities. So what is our responsibility as auditors? We have to be able to opine that the district's financial statements is presented fairly in all material respects with generally accepted accounting principles, or what we call GAAP, right? We want to make sure that your financial statements are free from material misstatement. That's our goal. And we'll talk a little bit more about those responsibilities in the upcoming slides. But to get kind of cut to the chase, we have to issue an opinion. The opinion that we've issued on the financial statements is an unmodified opinion. So what that means is quote-unquote "clean opinion." We're going to delve into a little bit of what the definition means, but that's very positive in terms of a result of an organization. It's the cleanest level of opinion that an organization can obtain as a result of their audit. Now, in addition to that, there's always opportunities for improvements. And as auditors, we identify instances where there could be improvements that could be made to the district's internal controls. So you'll see there in bullet point number two, we identified a material weakness and significant deficiency in internal control. This is the pathway by which entities can improve their internal controls, can improve their operations, right? And our responsibility is to be able to identify those and to be able to bring that to light to the governing board. So with regards to the material weakness, this was an instance where we found that the revenue recognition for specific grant revenues were not being posted in the correct fiscal year. So it's just mainly a timing in terms of when those are being reported. And also improvements on the district's vulnerability management in terms of turning around, resolving some of those vulnerability issues. And actually, what would be good is throughout the presentation, I'll be referring to specific page numbers of the AFRA, just so that you can get a sense of where to find those. So for instance, those are going to start on page 155 of your AFRA, where we kind of detail those areas. The good thing about some of these instances is that the requirement is for the district to be able to review our recommendations and to prepare a corrective action plan. And what that means is they take responsibility of those issues, they prepare a plan to remediate those issues, and then we'll look next year to make sure that those problems have been remediated. So with any kind of noncompliance or instance of improvement, the district took responsibility for those this year, prepared a plan, and we'll make sure that that plan is implemented prior to the end of the next audit. Now, we've identified no instances of noncompliance or other matters. We do issue something called the management letter, which is, again, our opportunity as auditors to provide management with instances for improvement, right? So we do have those improvements noted on page 246 of the audit. And again, those also come with corrective action plans where management take responsibility for those and prepare a plan for remediation. Now, moving on to the federal compliance audit. This year, we had a total of 10 major programs. Certainly, there's a wide array of programs that the district managed that are federally funded. You'll find the list of those programs on page 152 of the AFRA. We did issue unmodified opinions over the audit of each of those major programs, but we did identify instances of noncompliance. So out of those major programs, we had five instances of noncompliance. You'll find those listed and detailed on page 162 of your AFRA report. And again, don't want to emphasize this more, but the corrective action plan process is so critical in the district being able to identify issues, agree with those instances of noncompliance, and prepare a plan to be able to remediate that in the future. And we'll be looking at those next year as well. Moving on to the state compliance audit, we had a total of 29 different state requirements that we audited on behalf of the district. There were a total of 12 instances of noncompliance, those you'll find listed out on page 177 of the report, and would also like to emphasize that we issued unmodified opinions on the audit of those state programs as well. And again, to emphasize, the district did have corrective action plans for those instances of noncompliance that they will be implementing in the coming year. Now, looking over in detail our responsibility as it pertains to the audit, right? When we do approach an audit, our responsibility is to design audit procedures in order to obtain reasonable but not absolute assurance that your financial statements are free from material misstatement. We also review the district's internal controls so that we can prepare an efficient and effective audit approach. Additionally, we review areas of compliance with laws and regulations and contracts. And then finally, we provide an opinion. And as we've kind of mentioned before, what does this opinion mean, right? I mean, what are we really communicating when we provide the district an unmodified opinion? Our responsibility in terms of providing this opinion is to be able to review the district's financial statements, which have been prepared by the district and obviously through the oversight of LAUSD's Board of Education, to make a determination that they're presented fairly in all material respects with GAAP. So when we issue an unmodified opinion, what we're saying is that there is no material misstatement on the financial statements. Ultimately, what we're saying is that the governmental activities, each major fund and the aggregate remaining non-major governmental funds, have been concluded that they are presented fairly in all material respects with GAAP. Now, there are an array of other responsibilities that we do have as it pertains to the audit. We did prepare an appendix in the presentation where you can go through those. Any areas of concern that should be brought to the board, I've already discussed. What we're saying is that all the other elements have been met properly. Now, very quickly, looking over some of the governmental, really looking over the financial statements and some of the highlights, right? Your government-wide financial statements is really comparable to those of a private sector. We have long-term assets, long-term liabilities there. If we just look at the current year activity, your total assets and deferred inflows increased by about $300 million as a result of increase in capital assets in addition to leases. We have a $1.26 billion decrease in your liabilities as a result of decrease in pension liabilities, which really, as a result of the strong market in '21, overall, your net position decreased, increased by $1.56 billion. So essentially, the negative got smaller, right? Last year, it was a negative $9.7 billion. This year, it's a negative 8.2. So we've seen improvement in the net position this year. Now, looking at your governmental funds, and your governmental funds capture your general fund, district bond fund, bond interest and redemption, in addition to your non-major funds, special revenue, capital projects, debt service. Overall, fund balance increased by $252 million. We saw an increase in the general fund amounting to about $500 million as a result of free funding due to the transfer of COVID testing and vaccination costs to the unassigned and unrestricted general fund balance. The district is looking for reimbursement from the Federal Emergency Management Agency for those fees, so that freed up some fund balance there. We see a decrease in the district bond fund balance in the amount of $230 million. That is as a result of the issuance of GO bonds in addition to spending on school modernization projects. Bond interest and redemption decreased by about $50 million as a result of fair value adjustments with the district's county pooled cash. And your other governmental funds increased by $70 million, specifically in special revenue as a result of the cafeteria funds with students coming back to school, the district earned higher revenues there. So kind of a mouthful. That really covers the areas that we'd like to communicate to the committee with regards to our results this year, and I would be more than happy to answer questions as they come along. Thank you, guys, so much.
Thank you, Mr. Moussa. And I'll just let the public know that there is a little more to the presentation on our public materials than, of course, the actual report, which I believe Ms. Goldberg held up last week to say is worth reading, and she has her hard copy right there. It's also available online as well. So, Mr. Hart, did you want to, I know we jumped the gun a bit in having Mr. Moussa present before you were here. Did you have any, you know, introductory remarks before we go to board member questions or comments? And thank you, Mr. Moussa.
I think he's addressed it adequately, so we'll take the questions.
Great. With that question, yes, Mr. Schmelzner.
So how many people actually work on our audit at Simpson and Simpson?
Yeah, that's a great question. 25 auditors. And that is, that is a mix of partners, managers, supervisors, and staff.
And they're dedicated to that audit for LAUSD?
Absolutely.
Okay. Do, does one auditor ever check another auditor's work, or is the work submitted and it's accepted as top notch?
Oh, sure. No, that's a great question. There's a very detailed review process in any CPA firm, specifically with ours, in terms of the totem pole, staff auditor, senior supervisor, manager, partner, work papers are reviewed at every level. So at no time are, is work prepared by one person and fully accepted. It goes through a very detailed review process up the chain. And through that, we have comments and, you know, corrections and, you know, improvements.
Okay. So my last question is, when one person checks another person's work, sometimes there are questions that come up, correct? And then you have a group discussion to see why that person, that auditor in particular, had those results? Is that how it works? Is that how you do it at the Simpson and Simpson?
You know, that's a great question. It's such a group effort. At no time do we have one individual performing work completely by themselves, unreviewed, unsupervised, or without actually understanding the big picture. So to kind of, to answer your question, everybody knows what everyone's doing, and we're very much team-oriented. So, you know, we know what the staff is working on, we review their work, and that's kind of how that goes.
That's great. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schmelzner. Dr. Rivas.
Thank you. Hi, thank you for being here and explaining as best as you could this entire report here. So for the financial, the federal compliance audit, you mentioned that you audited 10 programs. Are these the same programs that you audit every year?
No, that is not. We audit different programs on a yearly basis. Correct.
So it's not always the same one?
It's not, yeah.
And you identified five types of compliance, and you mentioned there are corrective actions. What happens after a year if the corrective actions are not up to your, like you have to par?
Oh, yeah, sure. No, that's a great question. So our responsibility in next year's audit is to communicate to the State Controller's Office what, what if any were the activities in which the district implemented. So we let them know if the district implemented the corrective action plan or not. Let's just assume it was not implemented for timing purposes, or they're still working on it, then we would communicate that it's partially implemented and have an update in terms of what's the timeline moving forward to ensure that it's eventually corrected. So it's never lost. It's either fully implemented, not, and then we keep following up each year. So it's essentially going to roll forward until it's fully resolved.
And has this happened before? I mean, in terms of the programs that are being in compliance, has it happened before?
If I might add, in the event that we didn't come about, if you will, it would qualify their opinion. So there is a consequence, and when those opinions change from being unqualified to qualified, it has a material consequence for the district in terms of its creditworthiness and our ability to receive those dollars in the future, and that there would be a financial ramification as well as a very significant reputational.
Right. So I'm sure the corrective plans are going to be done ASAP, just so it won't come out.
To the best of our ability, they're typically, by the time you read them, they've already been executed upon, and the corrective action is either completed or very much in process. Sometimes you don't know the completion, if you will, until you get to the end of the fiscal period, but we, as soon as we discover it. And it is not always the case, but it is often the case that we are disclosing these matters to them as a matter of our preparation of the financials and, in fact, are inviting them to make the finding. So it's seldom an aha, gotcha. It's typically a much more collaborative process.
Right, I understood. And is the public privy to these corrective actions? Can the board, you know, follow up, making, is there a follow-up at Simpson and Simpson before the one year, or is just to check in or anything like that?
So actually, within the AFRA, you'll find the actual corrective action plans prepared by the district stipulated there. Toward the end of our report, you'll find prior year findings and our determination if last year's corrective action plans were implemented. So those are also in the AFRA as well.
Yeah. Well, I mean, you know, the public doesn't have, unfortunately, the time to read all this, so we want to make sure that we're, you know, being as transparent so the public who, you know, watching this can understand, you know, the 10 programs or were they, you know, just, just for, you know, sake of transparency. And the same question goes for the state, 29 compliance procedures. So this is just, these programs are selected in random and just to be audited?
Yeah, so the state programs are actually pretty consistent. We are provided with the requirements from the state in terms of what needs to be audited. So essentially, any program applicable to the district, we have to review. So those are typically pretty consistent year to year.
And just one last one. The decrease in liability, I'm sorry.
Just to point a clarification, it is often the case that the audit is a condition of our accepting those dollars, so it's not as random as it is scripted and scheduled.
And then just one last one on the liabilities. I did read that there was a drastic decrease because, you know, the market was doing great. And so it seems like this is very volatile, the OPEB liabilities. It just seems that one year is doing great, another one is doing different. So what's such a reliability on this? Why do we put in so much money in there? And it fluctuates, and it's a 30-year sort of prognosis ever. I just think that it's just so unreliable to be relying on that or just focusing on OPEB. It just seems that's money that's there that we could use.
Your observation is correct. It is very volatile, especially has been of late. If you go back over a period of, say, the last five years, pre-pandemic to now, as you have seen in virtually any market or any, any structure that holds equities, you've seen a lot of movement both up and down. So while the net position of the district improved, it has to do with the market returns associated with OPEB and our pension liabilities. I hope I'm wrong in predicting this, but when we look at June 30th of this year, given how the market has underperformed, if you will, you will not see that same condition. It is volatile. It is the nature of how those 30- to 40-year obligations are managed for. They have in their authorized investments, they hold, they hold equities, they hold the types of securities that will have significant market fluctuations. That is by design. It's what's needed in order to earn a rate of return necessary to retire the obligation within a 30- or 40-year window. The challenge is, on a year-over-year basis, you're going to see what you're describing. Your description is accurate. And the hope is that we don't get caught whipsawed in it. But as we will discuss at some point with regards to our contribution rates, either into the state pension or what will be recommended from our actuarial with regards to OPEB, it is not reasonable to assume that those will remain unchanged and the contributions will go up.
Just one last question. So, I mean, we've had OPEB liabilities, you know, since teachers have been, you know, retired, you know, before the age of 65. But overall, have the cost of these liabilities threatened the district's financial health?
Sure, yes.
They have. So we see that if, if we keep seeing, you know, the OPEB going up, then that's, you know, eventually gonna...
Yes. Dr. Rivas, prior to your joining the board probably about a year ago, we went through some of the underlying nuts and bolts, if you will, of the OPEB liability. And happy to refresh that if that's of benefit to the board. The long and short of it is, the OPEB liability is growing for three, I'll say, three primary factors. One is that we have less folks contributing in and more folks drawing upon it. So like social security, that creates a bit of an imbalance relative to the current contributions. Secondly, it's reflecting the cost of medical health, the provision of health benefits. And we have not only more people, but people live longer, and so you have greater exposure, more, more drawing on it for a longer period of time. And the underlying asset, if you will, or asset's the wrong word, underlying benefit of that is the medical system itself. And it is, to say inflationary is probably putting it mildly. So when you add all of those together, you have a circumstance where the percent of every dollar we pay out in compensation is, to a greater and greater extent, going to be needed to satisfy the obligations associated with our OPEB.
Thank you, Dr. Rivas, and thank you, Mr. Hart. Dr. Rivas beat me to the punch on the OPEB line of questioning, but thank you for explaining that, which is helpful for the public, especially as we're talking about reserves, which we'll get into a little when we're talking about the governor's budget and what does the liability mean for the district today and down the line. Dr. McKenna, questions, comments?
No questions, but appreciate very much the comment I would have. It's very appreciative. I think it's thorough. Appreciate the comments of my colleagues as well, which talks about the accountability of it, the accuracy of it, how reliable can we rely upon it. I'm satisfied at this point.
Great. Thank you, Dr. McKenna. Ms. Ortiz Franklin.
Thank you, and kudos to the team for having several years of clean audits. It gives us a lot of confidence when we hear from... It gives us a lot of confidence when we hear from our outside auditors. I think as a general question for the public, considering, I believe, if memory serves correctly, the district pays the auditor, and I think it was roughly $4 million, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Hart, just for the services? Or we can look it up if, if we need to. But the, the general question is, if the entity being audited pays the auditor, what sort of guarantees do we have that this is still sort of the most legit process? You can imagine people asking questions depending on the, the line of funding. And being the public entity that we are, we want to make sure we're very clear with folks that this is common practice, how auditors are paid by the entities who are being audited.
Trying to answer that in succinct manner. First off, it is a requirement of state law that we engage with an independent external auditor that is selected through a competitive process, and that has been and remains the case. So Simpson and Simpson was awarded the business previously, and more recently has been signed up again, if you will, as a result of said process. The aspect of who pays for it, if we could find somebody else to do so, I'd gladly take you up on that, but it's, that's not within our purview, and it would be counter to prevailing practice. It is a, to put it into the category of it, it is the cost of doing business. With that said, their independence and the peer reviews that they go through to ensure that not only are they independent, if you will, but qualified to render the opinions that they ultimately bring forth, whether those are unqualified or otherwise, is part of the process. It is, you know, an open book, quite literally, our selection process. Happy to cover that at any point in time. Fact of the matter is, I'm remembering more the difference between the various respondents, not what we actually paid them this year, we can get that information. Joseph may know it off the top of his head, I do not recall.
I think my team just found it was 4.4 million, but over five years, which feels better, just in terms of the overall cost. Others were probably wondering. Yeah.
It is the case, it is a, there is always a question that's worth debating of two, two factors. One is what's the duration? I would argue strongly against having anything less than three, if not even four. When you have a circumstance such as ours, when you have such an infusion of federal dollars, it's difficult to make a transition at that time because of the learning curves associated. We saw that in some of the bids that we'd received. The differential between Simpson and Simpson and others was significant. And we didn't feel that in the aspect of independence or being able to render an opinion that would hopefully bring forth confidence from the board and the public, that it, that paying up was warranted at this moment in time. It is also the case that though it's a five-year agreement, we, as you might imagine, wrote language that if, for whatever reason, we find ourselves where we need to part company, we can reissue the RFP and do so. Say that, you know, I don't want Joseph to get nervous, but that is, that is the case, and since you're asking, that's the answer.
I appreciate that, generally how this works and then specifically what we've engaged in. And then my last question is, thank you, Mr. Schmelzner, for asking how many of your teammates are working on this, because I hadn't realized it was 25 folks. How does that compare to our own internal auditing that currently exists or will exist in the future? I know we've been looking at potentially growing our own practices for internal audits.
In terms of, their dedicated staff will be greater than what we have. The internal audit office that is contemplated, I, I think it's fair to say, will not be 25 individuals. They are not here for, to be clear, year-round. It is, there is an audit period. There are different points in the calendar in which we engage with them. We provide prepared, sorry, prepared-by-client information. They come in, there's a spot on the 26th floor, we have a conference room reserved for them. They come in, they do their work, they depart. Additional information is shared. Some of this is even occurring in the spring relative to our fiscal year, prior to June 30th. Then there is the materials that are, material activities associated with our financials. As, let's be clear, there are financials upon which they're rendering opinion. As those are being compiled and prepared, we come back in the fall, and that leads to a point in time where, in December, we deem those final. They move on to LACO, and here we are today in January discussing them publicly. Over the course of the year, I'd have to guess, but I, I, my, my guess is it's probably somewhere in the neighborhood of eight to 10 full-time equivalents, as if they worked full-time, but I'm actually going to step aside and ask Joseph to qualify my answer.
Yeah, so, you know, in the current year, just looking at what we've built, we've built about 10,500 hours, something to that effect. So Mr. Hart hit it right on there. It's not 25 people, full-time, eight hours a day. Certainly, we start the audit very early in the year, and then we have different teams that come in that are supervised by the same level of people. So it's just based on where we are in the phase of the audit. So when we say 25 people touched the audit, but not necessarily 100% full-time, right?
Very thorough, thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Ortiz Franklin, Ms. Goldberg.
Yes, thank you. On page 250 and following, you have recommendations that have been partially implemented. How do you follow up on that, or do you wait for the next audit to follow up on those?
Yeah, yeah, that's a great question. So, we certainly wait for the next year. So what we do this year is we say, okay, what, where are we in the process? What happened and what's left, right? So we look at the documentation that shows what's been implemented. We get a sense of what the district is still working on. We get an idea of what happened and what is the timeline moving forward. And we do our best to provide that update in the report so that people understand that it's still a work in process.
Should we be concerned that there are 89 pages of recommendations?
Yeah, so, so 89, oh, I guess, that, that's a great question. All 89 is not just recommendations. I think so much of it is kind of detailing the compliance and the laws and going into how we selected our samples. And, you know, with, with a school district this large, you know, we, we do have observations. Those observations are typically accepted by the district. They prepare great plans to kind of remediate those. So we do our best to follow up every year to make sure that those are implemented.
I might, bold.
Go ahead.
Board Member Goldberg, I, I think it's something worth noting. We welcome the audit. It is an opportunity for us to, if you will, have that independence, have a mirror, and find where it is that we are, if you will, afield from best practice. It is the case, however, given our size and complexity, that there are times when we're learning something about ourselves. But I would, I would be quick to say on two extremes. One, if there weren't findings, I would question the, the oomph of the audit process. That's probably the politest way I can put it. And at the other hand, if the findings were so egregious that they were resulting in a qualification of our opinion, I would probably challenge that as well. I don't want to say 89 pages is, you know, certainly as opposed to 40 or 120.
No, 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 I, I only wanted to ask the question because if anybody picks up the book and they'll see all of this, they'll say, oh my goodness, really? And I wanted to be able to say in public that a lot of them were very minor. A lot of them have only a few recommendations that can be easily done. I mean, and some of them already say that the people are working on some of those recommendations already. But if you were to pick up the book and you were to look at it, you might think, oh my goodness, 89 pages of recommendations? What does that mean? I just really wanted clarification. On page 16 and 17, you talk about net position. Would you explain what net position means?
Of course. So, your, your assets, deferred outflows, liabilities, deferred inflows. Essentially, what we're talking about is equity. What is left over at the end of the year in terms of financial resources to be able to use into the future? So that's what we mean when we say net position.
And so, there is something that says net position on page 17, beginning of the year, and it has a negative 9.76 billion. It says net position at end of year, negative 8.15 billion. What is, what are those negative means?
Well, ultimately, what we're saying here is that your liabilities are higher than your assets, right? And a lot of it revolves around the discussion that Mr. Hart has had about OPEB and net pension liability. Those are major drivers to the increased liabilities of the district. And what we're saying is that those are higher than your assets. So ultimately, the ending net position is negative. But there are resources within your other buckets of net position that you're obviously using in terms of operations.
That includes some special education incursions as well, right, into the general fund?
Absolutely. All of the resources from your governmental funds are flowing through to your statement net position, and you're finding many of those dollars that we talked about previously are embedded in that bucket.
So when it says a negative 8.15 versus a negative 9.76, that means our position has improved?
Exactly, that is correct.
By about a $1.6 billion?
Correct, exactly, yes.
I, I think that's important to note because it, every year, if you take a look at the years, we don't improve every year, so that was a good thing. I think I'm just about done, hold on. I had one little tiny question. On page V, which is, you know, at the beginning there, it says, "Other findings include independent study program immunization and unduplicated pupil count. The common finding is the lack of supporting documents for some samples tested. As an effect, the district is disallowed to claim for a particular revenue resulting from average daily attendance generated by the sample students." What does that mean?
Right. So throughout the array of state, really what you just referenced are specifically state compliance requirements that we test. Like, for instance, for attendance, if we have examples where attendance is granted for a particular student and we determine that that shouldn't have been the case, when we say disallowed, we will calculate what we consider the question costs, and that process is what the district plays out with the state comptroller.
And when things are disallowed, does that mean we return money to the state? Or?
Yes, so, so for, for example, for attendance specifically, that would be a perfect example of your funding into the future is adjusted for the findings that we identify from the previous fiscal year.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Goldberg. Can I just ask on that specific one? Students who aren't fully immunized, we cannot claim as enrolled, is that correct? I mean, what, what, Ms. Goldberg was asking about the larger question, but with that specific example, if a student doesn't have their full immunizations, not talking about COVID, state, state law, we can't claim ADA for that.
Yes, within this, within this realm, we have to disallow ADA for those students that are not fully immunized, correct?
I just say that for whoever's listening, this is why we stress the, I mean, beside the health benefits and herd immunity, but also we can't claim, you know, ADA. Just a few questions for me that kind of pick up on where my colleagues left off, and then I'll turn to the superintendent. Can you just, you know, I think that net position that Ms. Goldberg was asking about is important because it does, it did improve, but, and I say this every time I have the opportunity, but we have two conversations around our financial position. One is billions in reserves, the other is a $8.1 billion negative net position. So can you, Mr. Suzer, Mr. Hart, explain, you know, for the public who's saying, well, we want to give teachers raises, you have all this money, and this board who says, we do want to give teachers raises? What's that disconnect between the billions in reserves and an $8 billion negative net position?
So, so, so what we're talking about here, and one of the things that Dr. Rivas mentioned, is the fluctuation of your OPEB liabilities, right? So we saw such a decrease in your liability in the current year as a result of market improvements. Now, of course, that's going to fluctuate into the future, right? So, so this may be, may look, may not look as great moving forward as a result of those liabilities because they're so massive in terms of its monetary value, right? With regards to your operations, when you look at your governmental fund financial statements, that's showing you your day-to-day operations, right? Can you finance your day-to-day operations? Those are outlined in your governmental funds. Those fund balances are being carried over to the statement net position. But again, if you remember, in your governmental funds, there's no long-term assets, no long-term liabilities there, right? When we look at the full accrual or the governmental-wide financial statements, that's where you're looking at your capital assets, and that's how you're bringing in your long-term liabilities. So, the day-to-day financing is what you're going to find on your governmental funds, right? That's going to show you your current programs and how you guys are working day-to-day. Governmental-wide is where we're having this discussion about OPEB, and that's where we have the negative net position in that specific regard. But I'll allow Mr. Hart to provide some more operational responses.
Thank you for the question. Couple of comments to make. One is, there's a difference in terms of timing. So when we look at the net position, it, it gives a reader an impression that the liabilities associated with OPEB and pension were going to be satisfied tomorrow. That's not the case. To the comments that were addressed to Dr. Rivas in line of his inquiries we've had before, these are generational liabilities that will take decades for us to solve at a statewide level in terms of pensions, and in terms of OPEB, the timing will be similar. With regards to the pension program, you know, I appreciate Board Member Goldberg's optimism and the commentary in terms of the overall improving position. But I think it is worth noting that CalPERS has changed their contribution rate for the upcoming forecast period, and when I speak to it in those terms, that's our budget year '23, '24, '24, '25, '25, '26. And that is because CalPERS had a, a 6% negative return as of June 30, '22. So they will be asking for additional, not only asking, it will be a requirement of off-the-top additional contributions. That is the, sort of the yin and the yang of how these things work. So while we are not paying the pension in full in one time, any more than we are the OPEB, it is the case that the dollars that we have at our disposal legally with regards to CalPERS and CalSTRS come off the top. As I said to you a year ago when we were talking about OPEB, it is my recommendation to you that the OPEB liabilities also be taken off the top. That has not always been the case. If we go back in time, the district has not always made the actuarial recommended contribution on an annual basis. We have, at various points in time, only elected to put in the pay-as-you-go amounts. You may recall this, last year we added an additional $633 million, 211 per year for the then-current forecast period. I go down this path in response to your question, Board Member, because what we're seeing with CalPERS is likely going to play out with regards to OPEB. They are similar in that there are managed investments, and we have no reason today to believe that those returns will be positive, nor will they be positive to such a degree that they meet the bogey, in essence, necessary for the contributions to remain constant or to go down. Said another way, when you have a negative 6% return, you expect to pay more in. When we see with regards to OPEB that the contribute, that the market returns are going to be negative there, when we're contributing a combined 430, that's 230 on a pay-go basis and an additional 211, we expect that both amounts are going to increase, so that the total will be greater than 440. What we will have to take off the top for the continued pay-as-you-go is in all likelihood going to be greater than 230, and the additional contribution to pay down that future liability is likely to be greater than 211.
When will you know that?
Appreciate that question. Unfortunately, we won't have that actuarial report for another, I think, 60 days. I believe we're expecting it in late March. So we should know it in and around second interim, but it is entirely possible that we will not actually have that until we come back to you with the proposed budget later in the May timeframe. That said, there, it is also worth noting that when we look across all funds, as Joseph was describing it, typically what is focused upon is the general fund, and that is appropriate because those bond funds are not available, to your question, Board Member Melvoyn, with regards to compensation. When we look at the bond funds, have it here roughly $1.3 billion, so you got to take that out. That's not available to us. When you look at the funds put on deposit to retire the bond funds, those are taxes that are dedicated for that explicit purpose, that's an additional $1.2 million. So between the two, we've just taken $3 billion off the table, so to speak. It's not even available to us. When we look at the other governmental, I'm going to round numbers, that's $680 million. Of that, it's comprised of three things. Two facilities grants, these are monies received from the state for the purpose, as if they were bond monies, not available to us. And the other is the cafeteria fund. That is essentially an enterprise, as we think about it, and a self-contained. That leaves us at about $3.3 billion in respect to the general fund. And as we've covered before, that gets distinguished between non-spendable, restricted. Non-spendable are things like prepaid, it's inventory, it's not cash. The restricted are dollars that come to us that have strings attached. It's not within our control to release those dollars for purposes other than what we receive them for. dollars for purposes other than what we receive them for. The committed are actions of the Board of Education, and those are, as we have spoken of before, those are dollars, as when we spoke of in August, that is, the Inflation Protection Fund that we set aside. The balance of reserve for economic uncertainty is compliance with the state law, and that's about $200,000, and that leaves in the unassigned, unapportioned amounts, less than $1 billion. So when you start to go through this, what is available for compensation goes from this eye-popping number of, you know, approaching $7 billion to 1/7 of that, for which we have already communicated to the board numerous times, that these are the funds that we have set aside for inflation protection. It is also the case that we have disclosed in our forecasts that there are a number of items that we have not brought forward to the board because, like the Legislative Analyst Office, we only deal with existing law and existing policy. We are not speculating, we are just commenting to you as that legislative body as to what is in and what is out of our forecasts, and so those dollars remain out, and at such time as there is a decision of the board to, if you will, expend or otherwise commit those funds, then you will see that balance also go down.
Great, thank you. And we're going to, we'll get to the Governor's Proposed State Budget in our next presentation, but just for the public, Mr. Hart, CalSTRS, CalPERS, pension, OPEB, many things, but mostly healthcare.
It is a distinction, yes, and OPEB is our own, whereas the CalSTRS, CalPERS are statewide programs.
Thank you. To Ms. Ortiz Franklin's point, thank you for raising it, and, you know, I know generally in accounting principles, sometimes you do want to switch up your audit firm. I know it's something we've talked to the superintendent's team about. I think Simpson and Simpson always does a great job and comes in relatively competitively, but it is something that the board should be aware of, that, you know, it may be wise in the future to switch it up to get the benefit of different perspectives, so I appreciate you bringing that up, Ms. Ortiz Franklin. And then, Dr. Rivas, I love your idea of trying to make the findings and corrective actions more accessible to the public. If anyone's listening, maybe a plug for Open Data, just a quick finding corrective action, but I do appreciate and have every year, you know, looking at this, I think it starts on page 155, but looking at the recommendation, and then there is, for the benefit of the public, the recommendation from your team, and then also the corrective action plan on the district side with a name and title and telephone number of who is in charge of that action. I mean, it is very helpful, so I think it would be beneficial to make that more transparent, but it's there, and, you know, I'll notice, as you were saying, I think your technical term, Mr. Hart, was the oomph of the audit. There are things, now having read this every year for a few years, that for a district our size, a few teacher misassignments or certification, like it would be, you know, any district approaching our size that doesn't, I'd want to know what they're doing and kind of maybe mirror some of those practices, but it seems like that's, you know, typical for a district of this size. The other ones that maybe are more unique to the time period, like signed master agreements and missing student work products for the independent study program, you know, those are the ones that I know I'm interested in following up on because those seem more immediate to address. But I do appreciate, one, that we have a clean or unmodified opinion, and two, that, you know, we're able to follow and then track those corrective action plans. Superintendent, any questions, comments?
Yes, thank you very much. I have immensely appreciated the comments of the board and the questions that have been asked, and I want to, much like you did, sir, piggyback on some of the comments that were made. Let's begin with one of the most important ones actually made by Board Member Ortiz Franklin, that the independent nature of the audit is protected. In fact, and by the way, that's a question that folks often ask. You know, you contract the entity, the agency that's going to perform the audit, is that not favorable to the client? Well, they lose their license if, in fact, they do not observe the strictest guidelines specific to the behavior and the process exercised by the audit team. And it's on that that I actually would like to make just three brief comments and maybe one question. Without a doubt, there's always, and I've heard over the past 11 months, a great deal of narrative around a word that President Goldberg actually used, actually two words, net position, net position, end-of-year fund balance, reserve. Those three general terms sometimes conflated and often distorted in the public narrative, sadly so, sadly so. So let me begin with a conclusion, and if I could just get a nod from Mr. Musa or CFO Hart, I would be happy enough. Is this district currently in a net negative position? Thank you.
I don't know if the cameras were on them, so that was a nod, I will say.
It was a nod.
There was a nod in the boardroom.
Information. And for the record, obviously, David Hart is an agency man, he works for LUSD. However, the individual responsible for the independent audit that resulted in unmodified position, which is the highest level sort of commentary on the district's ability to accurately, fairly and transparently report its own financial position, asserts that we are experiencing a net negative position. That means that our liabilities exceed our assets. I just want to pause there for a second because that statement alone is often disputed out there on the street. Inspiring, unfortunately inspiring, delusional, delusional, and hurtful optimism when it comes to the finances of our district. The second point, as we look at, as you looked at the net position of the district, end-of-year fund balance, not only for this year, but obviously a trend that reflects a number of previous years, is it your opinion, assuming that the district's reserves are fairly and accurately stated, is that level of reserve or end-of-year fund balance, which is here and now, the liability is a multi-year examination, considering the size of our budget, and let's speak specifically to general fund, not other federal programs, is that end-of-year fund balance or reserve or net position for the year, number one, fairly stated by the district?
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you. The second question, is that level of end-of-year fund level or reserve or net position excessive for the size of our budget?
I don't believe so.
Thank you.
I don't believe so.
I appreciate those comments and the responses, and they're coming from an independent entity that we pay, but they're on the hook in terms of providing true and accurate information, nothing more, nothing less. It is, on the basis of these commentaries, on the basis of these disclosures and analysis and examinations, that we, as staff, have an obligation, not only to report, but then make operational decisions regarding the financial comportment of the district, and that includes what we buy, how we buy, what we contract, what we service, what we can invest as a school system in our workforce and in terms of assets that we are duty-bound to protect. Mr. Chairman, I conclude my comments, thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent. Any final, Dr. McKenna?
Yeah, thank you very much, all of you. I was intrigued by a question that you asked them about unvaccinated students and ADA. Under what scenario would an unvaccinated student enroll in this district and be enrolled, so they'd have to be excluded later from ADA eligibility? How do you get enrolled in our district if you weren't vaccinated to come in? I don't understand that, I've never heard of that.
I don't know if that's a question for Mr. Hart or someone on the superintendent.
I can answer just briefly.
Wait, wait, before, you asked the question because it seems that you have some awareness of an unvaccinated student would be considered now to be excluded from earning ADA. How do you get enrolled in the first place?
I think Mr. Salsido is going to answer it, because, yeah, that finding is in the audit report, so I was just reading that, but it's a good question. I mean, I assume it has to do with new enrollees and conditional enrollment, but...
Correct. It's one of the findings in the audit, and what we've seen is an uptick in noncompliance when it comes to families newly enrolling students, as well as an increase in newcomer students that have not been fully vaccinated. It is an area that we're focusing on as a district. We, one area that there is significant investment to ensure that students that get the access to immunizations, direct access from our wellness centers, as well as kind of deployed nursing staff that have been targeting students that are out of compliance. The state allows a student to be enrolled up to 30 days without being immunized. There are waivers for students, homeless students, and others that also qualify for extensions around that immunization requirement, and so many of our students fall within those categories. But just know that this is an area that, based off of the findings, that we are following up on and are deploying resources to really ensure that families are aware that their students need to be immunized. But we know that there's been resistance and reticence from our families, especially with the existing environment that has arisen as a result of the pandemic, that has influenced folks' decisions around immunizations, and so there's also an educational component that we're deploying with that strategy. But I can have Dr. Maholtra and myself follow up and brief you on just the activities that we're taking on.
No, I appreciate the update from here. I think you've been clear. Yes, I've forgotten about the enrollment because I haven't been on a school campus for a while, but to not be immunized and present that on your first day of enrollment, my experience was you couldn't enroll. But if there's a waiver period of 30 days or some other periods there, that has, that has escaped me, and I must confess to that, but that's what intrigued me when you talked about excluding them later on in an audit and them discovering they're not responsible for enrolling students. We are, and if we are under some guidelines under which we can enroll without evidence of immunization, I understand that. So I don't need to explain that further. Yes, at the school-side level, if they're in compliance with our guidelines, I'm okay with that. But they do have to then follow up and implement. Beyond the waiver period, how long does that go? So if parents are still unaware or reluctant, that's another matter of the human factor, and you have to communicate. I'm satisfied, I have no further questions, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. McKenna. Yes, Mr. Schmelz, and then the superintendent has a conclusion.
The 30-day rule, is that a district rule? Is that a state rule? Is that a, what is it? Who came up with the 30 days?
It's a state requirement.
You know, it's very dangerous when people are unvaccinated. I mean, there's been an uptick in measles and mumps and rubella all over the U.S., so it's very important that we follow through, and the following through, I know this is not you, the following through for the 30 days is on us. Through whom? Through our school nurse, through our principal, through our teachers? How do we make sure that we actually keep the 30-day rule fixed? How do we do that?
Yeah, that is generally managed through our nursing services. There are, we are tracking those students that are unimmunized and out of compliance, and we do follow up to ensure that there is appropriate access. And there are extensions, like I said, there are rolling extensions for waivers for particular students if they can't get an appropriate clinic time or access to an immunization appointment. That's why we want to deploy a strategy that where we ensure that families know that they can walk into one of our wellness centers, one of our SEPA centers to also be fully immunized. We're also working with our external partners, just recently at Union Rescue Mission, where we knew that there were students that were not immunized. We actually had mobile units go out there to help immunize those students. So there's a multi-pronged strategy to support our students and families.
Thank you, Mr. Salsido. I was going to say, besides the hesitancy and misinformation which we're working to combat, it was also hard for families to get in to see doctors, particularly during the early part of the quarantine period, and so we were delayed there, and I know the district and our partners are doing a lot to get kids vaccinated. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you very much. Second, if I don't bite at the apple, when the financial position of the district is declared through your audit, obviously it's an all-inclusive look at all funds, and as Board Member Rivas wisely commented earlier, that some of these reviews are cyclical. You just look at a number of grant programs, for example, funds, but rather than just cyclically looking at these, you also devote some additional attention to areas of possible higher risk, if that higher risk is known or anticipated, correct?
That's absolutely correct, yeah, through our risk assessment procedures.
Thank you. In reporting to the board and to the community via this audit, our current financial position in an accurate and truthful manner, you look at a multitude of funds, general fund being obviously the bread and butter of our district, that is the most recurring nature of investments into our district, and then you have a whole host of grant programs. Obviously, one notable one, a recent one, is the federal investment through ESAR. It is easy to conflate the total financial position of the system by, or confuse, by simply adding up general fund end-of-year balance with federal fund end-of-year balance. Is there a risk, a significant risk, associated with deriving conclusions about the financial viability of the district and the possible use of dollars that are deemed as reserve dollars without separating those that are recurring versus non-recurring, meaning general fund recurring monies versus monies that within two years, such as ESAR, will time out?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, that definitely changes the outlook of the position. I think from the audit perspective, and I believe that, you hit that right on the head, when we look at ESAR, we're obviously determining that you're spending that money just for the purpose of the program. So assuming that you can spend it on anything would be incorrect, and as part of our responsibility is, through our federal compliance audit, is validating that those dollars were used for the specific purpose of the program.
If, and if I may, just finally, if the district were to move in a direction where, without regard to the finality of some of these grant programs, the district would make decisions that would long-term increase the liability on the basis of this year's examination of the availability of fund regardless of its recurring or non-recurring nature, could that impact a declaration of a modified position, unmodified position going to next year, or ultimately, the credit rating agencies look at our district's position?
Right. I mean, the point that I would speak to is to assume that these funding that are obviously have a time period would potentially occur in the future would not be good or wise of a decision to make in terms of making future financial decisions or even projecting, as you stated, in terms of how the credit ratings look, the budgeting process. So although we are not specifically looking at the budget from that perspective, I would agree that that would not be a wise way to look at your financial position, of course.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sherpas.
Thank you all. Thank you, Mr. Sousa, very informative, Mr. Musa, very, Simpson and Simpson, and I'm just kind of like a little portmanteau there, Mr. Musa. And please give our best to Ms. Yuan, hope she feels better. Thank you. We'll keep Mr. Hart up here and bring up Ms. Alvarez for our next presentation on the Governor's Proposed Budget. I don't know, Superintendent, if you have any introductory remarks, I want them to present, and then we will discuss. Okay, great. So Ms. Alvarez and Mr. Hart, take it away.
Great. Good morning, everyone. Thank you for having me. I will intend to be brief and happy to answer questions. Mr. Hart will also be here for any questions you may have for him in our finance department. I'll wait for my slides to come up. In the interim, I'll mention, so the budget came out about two weeks ago. As you know, this kicks off the beginning of the budget discussion in Sacramento. They have to adopt the budget by June 15. So what we, information we have today, it's what the governor came up with in two weeks, and we'll know more in the coming, by February 1, there will be additional information about the details. For that reason, for today, my focus will be high-level, mostly around Sacramento-level numbers, and then, of course, we have questions Mr. Hart may be able to answer today. We also intend to have an update to the committee of the whole next month, on February 24. Will there be additional information based on whatever else we get from the Governor's Office in the coming weeks? So we're just waiting for my slides, but I'll start off. As you may have seen now in the last few weeks since the Governor's proposal came out, there is a reduction in state funding, and the LAO, Legislative Analyst Office, also confirmed, it's about $22.5 billion in reduced state funding compared to what the state had anticipated beforehand. I'll start off as well. I'll start off, as well, I wait for the slides, just a few comments. As you know, the state, you may know, the state revenues is heavily volatile. It relies on the, over two-thirds, over 65% of the state revenues every year are due to the state income, which a lot of the wealthy individuals in California, they rely on the stock market and capital gains, and so it attributes to that volatility, unlike the sales tax and corporate tax that might be a little bit more stable. Perfect. All right. So you can see here the high-level numbers of note for us in schools. Prop 98, friendly reminder, is K-12 preschool, after 12th grade, and also higher education community colleges. So $108.8 billion is approximately $1.5 billion less than what the legislature adopted last June of 2022 for Prop 98. The state budget, just like ours, it's a three-year multi-budget year. It's about $4.7 billion less than what was predicted to be in that three-year period. And it's about 38% of the total state budget general fund. There is a state reserve that was established several years ago. With the current economic circumstances, will be around $8.5 billion, the ending balance for '23, '24. There are particular restrictions as to when the state can tap into those resources. And at this time, the governor and the legislature are not proposing to tap into any of those state reserves. They're waiting, you know, for maybe when it rains even further than it is now. And due to that state reserve, there's also a requirement that school districts have to have a reserve cap operative for the upcoming school year. It's about 10% requirement at the state level, and school districts may have some flexibility to pursue a waiver if needed be. Despite there not being a whole lot of new resources, because again, the most of the focus of the funding that is available will be for us statutory COLA. The governor has commitment to maintain programs that we have seen on investments to our children over the last several years. I wanted to distinguish the one-time versus the ongoing programs, with the exception of the one on the One-Time Children Youth Behavioral Health Initiative, which is a funding $4 billion initiative over the next several years. Our school district has benefited from some of the other resources. And again, happy to come back to any questions you may have around here. But for the purpose of this proposal, no reductions to here, but we do see some reductions elsewhere. There's, just the way the Prop 98 works, there is a small increase, $5.9 billion for Prop 98, and the majority of that would be available for the required statutory COLA of 8.13% for this upcoming fiscal year. And you do see that there's a projection of a lower COLA the following fiscal year in '24, '25. So the bulk of that money, again, is already called out for this COLA at the state level. Of the additional ongoing funding, there's only two proposals really have an increase. There's this proposed equity multiplier. It has been described, but we don't have any much more details to share at this point. It might be similar to the way that we have the SENI proposal, the Student Equity Needs Index, that is really focusing about targeting additional resources based on school site and specific student allocations and needs. So again, it will be important to see the details to see how it differs and/or compares to SENI. And there, as I understand, there will be a supplement, not supplant requirement, for the equity multiplier. There's also a continued investment in Universal TK for this upcoming '23, '24 fiscal year. We will be able to continue to enroll children, particularly, and from a state perspective, those who turn five by April 2 of 2024 will be able to enroll. There's a continued investment in one additional classified or certificated employee in the UTK classrooms to maintain a 1 to 12 ratio. And then you can see a few other proposals with one-time investments that are of interest to us. Literacy coaches, similar to the Superintendent Carvalho's priority around cultural passport, arts passport, the state's considering doing a pilot for high school seniors only, about $200 per student, and only for one year. And then a small but significant investment for fentanyl prevention in trying to provide two doses at every middle school and high school. I know it's been a topic of interest to the board in the past, and also the board supported as Superintendent Carvallo, Prop 28, the voters passed this past November of 2022. We don't have any details at this point about the state official per pupil amount. Our financing may have, does have some predictions, should you have additional questions. But from a state perspective, is 1% of the last Prop 98 level, and that's about $941 million for this upcoming year. There's, I mentioned, given that the state's economic situation, that there are some reductions, some proposed delayed of funding, just to be able to mitigate the $22.5 billion state projected deficit, there is a proposed reduction to a grant that we and other school districts across California receive for this year. About one-third of the grants proposed to be removed, taken back from us. That's a significant cut that schools across California, including LA Unified, will be receiving. The way that the Department of Finance is seeing it as if it's a swap, because there's money for Prop 28, for Arts and Instruction, the Arts and Music Initiative from November, they see it as maybe a complimentary year. Well, you're getting money from Prop 28, therefore we can make a reduction to this initiative. There's also a proposed decrease of about $100 million for the state facility grant program. And the last state bond that was passed was in 2016 in Prop 51. There'll be an intent to try to put something on the ballot next year in 2024. And so the state had provided one-time general fund money in this year's budget, trying to do a bridge of funding leading up to any state bond. So they're proposing to reduce that amount by $100 million. And then lastly, same thing related to school facility needs and the state matching grants, there's a proposed delay of funding for preschool TK and full-day kindergarten facilities. And then there's some complimentary policy proposals regarding school accountability tied to the equity multiplier, when we'll know more in the coming weeks. And then for special education, the big takeaway on this one, they're proposing that the Department of Education upload the special education self-plans onto their website for more transparency. And with that, this is an overview, again, the weeks and months ahead, working with the finance team, and David's here, here if you have any questions. I mentioned there's some local reference to our budget development. Again, and David, if you want to, please come in and cover anything else you'd like to. But in short, from the state perspective, you'll hear more in the coming months. The governor's budget will come out again revisions in May, by May 15. It will be informative according to whatever tax collections come out of the April 15 deadline for tax receipts. And then they'll have a final budget by June 15, and then our finance department and others across California have 45 days to make any revisions, see if there's any changes to the state budget. So with that, I'll turn it back to Mr. Chair Melvoine and Superintendent Carvallo, or anyone else who may have questions or comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Alvarez. Superintendent, did you want to begin or conclude, or just jump in as, okay, board members? Mr. Schmelz.
Can you tell me what the school facility grant would do for our schools?
So at this point, you know, we have our local school bond, Measure RR, from 2020. There's no state bond that has passed since 2016. So the state has run out of money from this facility program. In the current fiscal year, '20 to '23, they added about $2 billion. That would be a bridge between now and 2024, that for those projects that have been deemed eligible for state matching funds, they would be able to tap into that. We have projects on the facility list, unfunded at the state level. So there's a $100 million reduction across California, so we might see some projects potentially delayed. But right now, we don't have the precise numbers as to are we on number five or 10 on the list, and what would be reduced. But there might be some reduction potentially in some of those projects.
Ms. Goldberg.
You were very quick. I missed a few things. You said that there is $4.86 billion for an 8.13% COLA, but you said that the Prop 98 funding was reduced by how much?
So it was reduced by $1.5 billion this current year, and about $4.7 billion over the three-year timeframe. And it has to do with, so there's declining enrollment, you know, there's various factors in Prop 98, it's three tests. We're in test one for the, this upcoming year and in years after that. We have declining enrollment, which means the state has more savings in funding that that would have otherwise gone to more students in the public school system. And so it ends up creating more money for less kids, but more money through Prop 98.
So less kids can mean more money per kid?
At the, the general per pupil average amount at the state level.
Right. So on Prop 98, less kids is a problem because you get less money overall, but it's not as big a problem because you get more per kid.
Yes, but from a, so there's a couple of things going on with Prop 98. When TK, the universal TK program was established two years ago, the legislature compromised with the governor that there would be an automatic re-benching, meaning that Prop 98 would be increased the same amount that it costs to have more kids in TK. So by that full implementation of '25, '26, when all four-year-olds can go free to TK across California, it'll be about $3 billion that Prop 98 will be rebanked above and beyond. So for this year, I don't have the specific numbers of how much is that re-benching, but one, $2 billion, let's say. There's also, I mentioned, the Prop 28. The initiative was clear, the voters passed in November, that the 1% of the Prop 98 that would go towards arts and music, that also would result in outside of Prop 98, it would be general fund outside of Prop 98. So when you start adding up the various movement of the re-benching of Prop 98, that's why you see a reduction of 1.5, but then you see net gain of 5.9 billion. So all the numbers come up to that. I don't know if that makes sense, but happy to have others kind of try to explain.
And this $941 million from Prop 28, looks like they're reducing more than we're getting. So we got a net gain of nothing, actually a loss.
Exactly.
We got a loss of about $300 million.
Yes. And this is definitely an opportunity for advocacy, as we have been part of other Superintendent Carvallo, our finance team.
That's not what the voters thought they were voting for. They thought they were voting for an expansion, not a reduction.
And that was in, last year, last week, the Senate Budget Committee had their first committee hearing on the budget. Senator Laird, who you know well, he made a comment similar to that. Voters did not say it would be an equal by equal of anything, you know, it's not meant to be a washout of the funds or a reduction of the funds. But that's what has been characterized, that you got money from Prop 28, we'll have a reduction over here.
Yeah, I think, I think the public will be very annoyed. They thought they were expanding opportunities for kids to have music and art education, not reducing it. That's terrible. Okay. On the 8.13% COLA, how do they know that it's going to be 3.54 in '24, '25?
That's the projection that the Department of Finance has at this time, and they will have updated numbers in May or June after the budget's adopted. They have their own forecast, economic forecast, and that's what they have. They don't have anything above, beyond that forecast. And of course, I have David, if should he want to say anything else from a local perspective.
You're looking at, it says, a comprehensive package of amendments to the K-12 accountability system. What, what do you anticipate that means?
So there's been concerns over the last few years, statewide concerns, not specific to LA Unified, around the LCAP, and just the following the money, where's the money, is it following the child that is generating the resources? So if you're a student with disabilities or an English language learner, is the money intended for those students going towards them? And so I could anticipate perhaps some clarification around the LCAP process or the information that's conveyed. The equity multiplier, this resulted from a bill by former, now Secretary of State Weber, and now, former Senate member, now Secretary of State Weber, that had been trying to provide additional funding for the lowest-performing student groups, oftentimes African-American, when you remove special education and other student categories. And so it might be around, if you're getting additional funding for targeted student populations, how is there guarantee or assurance that the money will be provided to those students? That's what's anticipated, but we'll know more in the next couple of weeks.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Goldberg. Ms. Ortiz Franklin.
Thank you. And Ms. Goldberg asked some of the questions that I had. First, on the arts piece, do we anticipate taking up any of that advocacy, given that it's such a loss? I can imagine it being a quiet sort of loss if we don't get loud about it. I don't know if the team already has plans.
It's been a significant topic of conversation in Sacramento. We're part of, it's called the Education Management Group, just ad hoc lobbyists for all the school districts, associations, school boards, ACSE, et cetera. We actually have a meeting this afternoon at 2:00 p.m. to start talking about the commonalities, where do we see eye to eye, and definitely this will be one of them. There's others who have questions about the equity multiplier. There's concerns about the Christmas tree sort of arrangement that LSF is becoming, you just keep adding new things with new requirements, and it's no longer discretionary funding if you're, you know, you're marketing for a particular student or a particular purpose. So those are the two that so far have become, have become the top concerns to the other education partners that we're working with.
And you'll let us know what we can do as a board, as individuals, we can encourage our constituents to do.
Of course. Mr. Hart?
I might, a couple of points of emphasis on that. One is to Board Member Goldberg's comments. We should not lose sight that the proposition we're speaking of is linked to Proposition 98. And so when you think of it in those terms, there is a finite percent that the state will allocate to education. So when that ballot initiative was passed, without there being a corresponding revenue increase, and you take into account that the state is saying that not only in the current period, but over the forecast period, there are tens of billions of dollars that they anticipated 12 months ago that are not expected to materialize. It is not a surprise, if you will, to folks in and of, if you will, in the inside baseball, did not expect that we would get a windfall. I think you should understand that that 941, or whether it becomes a billion, or, you know, that math is still going to play out. But the point is that the amount by which we're being reduced almost looks dollar-for-dollar in terms of our current forecasts. We expect out about that 940, that we're going to get about 85 million. That's been our back of the envelope. We are not assured, it's not like in some program where we get our 9%. There is a, certainly a reasonable estimation, but the numbers we're running right now show that we will lose, by virtue of the reduction in the discretionary, we will lose about 85 million, when we get back about 84. And it needs to be understood that it's really, from my perspective, sort of a gut punch. Because the dollars that were coming to us were discretionary. The dollars that are now coming to us are stipulated. So not only do we lose the dollar, we have the change in the strings attached with those dollars, and it is not in our estimation than a dollar-for-dollar. You may recall, we want to be clear on this point, we had not allocated those dollars, so we don't necessarily have the supplement, supplant issues that others may have. But the lack of discretion in addition to the lack of dollars is a significant issue for us.
Thanks. I can imagine lots of families and students looking forward to more arts programming next year. And just given where we are in the timing, are we going to be able to hire a bunch more folks, you know, to start in the fall, to create master schedules where kids have additional courses available to them? This sounds like a real opportunity to get loud collectively, so welcome, you know, specific actions that we can promote to our constituents. I'm sure lots of people would be happy to get behind this, that their kids can really access the arts programming they are promised next year. And then also on the accountability system amendments, I have been watching Shirley Weber's propositions over the last few years, and I think in this district, we're really interested in equity, and particularly for black students, how we can close those gaps. What do you anticipate our participation looking like in the amendment process? Is it something that the board or the public can get involved with on that accountability? I don't imagine, well, I wonder, will that extend to assessments and other pieces, you know, funding assessments, what else? How can we get involved, the board or our families?
Unfortunately, at this point, I prefer not to speculate, just because accountability is pretty broad, and also participation could vary. The State Department of Finance will likely come up with additional writing details by February 1 or soon after. I mentioned at the committee of the whole on February 24, that we have intent, our finance colleagues and OGR, if there's additional information to share with the board separate than today, then we can provide more information to you at that time. Because right now, it'd just be speculating what they may or may not do. And there's also, as I understand, some proposed organizations who may be looking at doing additional bills regarding accountability and LCAP. And I have suggested we will communicate with them once we see what the governor's office is proposing, so there's some synergy and coherence as to, you know, what are the various proposals.
Okay. Thank you. And then my last question, just to clarify for our families, we are still ahead of the curve with the UTK. Is that right? That's still, in LA Unified, any four-year-old, the birthday in this, you know, changing birthday at the state level doesn't matter for our own enrollment, so that we're very clear, if you have a four-year-old, we have space for you in LA Unified.
Exactly. The only thing that matters from the state level about the finances, we're finally getting reimbursed. getting reimbursement from the state. Up until now, we were an early adopter, one of the earlier, you know, champions about UTK, as of 2015, now the state's going to be paying us that investment that we're already making.
Which we welcome. Thanks, team.
Thank you, we'll go to the other side. I just want to say, so Mr. Hart, I think for folks in the finance budgeting world, what you're saying is that it's not unexpected or surprising that the state is playing this supplanting game with, with Prop 28, but I'll say that as a voter, they were very explicit, as was the language of the ballot measure, that it was going to supplement, not supplant. So I think, I mean, this conversation won't be over today, but I think both are true, in that we shouldn't have been surprised that they were going to do this, but the language of the ballot measure was very clear, that it was going above the constitutionally mandated minimum to increase, not, you know, maintain.
Agreed.
Dr. McKenna, and then Dr. Rivas.
For the legislative advocate, what is your perception, maybe I'm asking you for speculation, if you can, and then don't, on the bill from Senator Portantino regarding enrollment versus attendance as a basis of funding? What do you think might happen with that?
It is one of the eight sponsored bills that the board approved last month on December 13, as, the bill was introduced last week, Senate Bill 98. It was not by coincidence, you know, Prop 98, Senate Bill 98, hopefully people remember the bill. It is an over $3 billion cost annually for the state to move in that direction. So given the state's economic situation, it will be significant convincing of the governor how to make that commitment when the revenues are less than projected. Again, $3 billion on an annual basis.
It's an expense to the, to the state?
Yes.
To implement, and there'll be an annual cost?
Yes, because it's, it's out of Prop 98. So the pie of Prop 98 is not growing, what, what has been 98 is redistribution or allocation of the existing Prop 98 funding, because they would give school districts who have a lower attendance due to a lot of student challenges with getting them to school, a lot of, you know, neighborhood safety issues, or a lot of mental health supports that students need, that it would give more funding for those school districts that have a lower attendance rate to be able to reinvest in additional support for students. And those districts that have a higher attendance rate would not be seeing as much resources going towards our district.
It seems somewhat inequitable, I'm, I'm sure people understand that. My complaining about it here is no consequence, I was one of the people that advocated for it a long time ago, and you picked up on it, I appreciate that. But all we do is lose for students that don't come to school every day. The loss of those funds benefits the state, does not help us serve those students, because we still have to send people out there to try to offer services, and they don't come for a myriad of reasons, much of which may have nothing to do with the students themselves. Their circumstances, their neighborhood, their parents, employment opportunities, stuff like that. So what you're saying is that their obstacles may be as insurmountable as the last time they tried it.
That, it's really a cost, that is about $3.4 billion the projected cost to implement this bill. For LA Unified, it's between $300 and $600 million a year that we're not able to get from the state due to the currently absent students that are not coming to school.
Thank you.
Dr. Rivas.
Thank you. Based on this, you know, proposed budget, are there any unresolved issues or anything that the district was advocating for that is not reflective in this budget that we, that you're concerned with, or we should, you know, advocate for?
Yes, thank you. So a great question, something that we have been advocating in prior years, and obviously we always welcome the state's investments in our schools and, and students. This year, Mr. Hart already mentioned in the prior presentation, that the increased rates for the pension system for CalPERS, there'll be a proposed increased rates over the coming years. In the past, even as much as last fiscal year, the state was providing a one-time general fund contribution to help offset the district's pension liability. That happened specifically during the COVID years, and also prior to the recession in '08, '09. This year, we're not seeing a state investment, and unfortunately, that means it, it does not free up as much resources that we would otherwise have for other student programs and, and meeting their needs. So that's one piece, in the past, that we have advocated for. And then, for the most part, I mean, they're providing the Sotterick COLA, which we always welcome and, and support that, and many other areas. Mr. Hart, anything that, I can't think of anything else right now that is not, that is, obviously, the $3.4 billion I just mentioned, that's a cost to the state. And then the other one that also would have a fiscal impact to the state that we're proposing is our mandatory kindergarten bill that we're reintroducing from last year. The bill got vetoed by the governor last fall due to the fiscal cost to the state, over $200 million, because if more kids come to kindergarten, that's a cost to the state, as Board President Goldberg pointed out. So those are some of the other tangential advocacy proposed through policy that have a fiscal implication.
Anything on staffing shortages that we're, you know, that we're, on entire California isn't experiencing, anything that there that's missing, right?
Of course, and just yesterday, I spoke to my counterparts with other urban districts and California Student Aid Commission, we had a conversation about what else can we do around the loan forgiveness, and, and effort to try to recruit and retain, and increase our teacher and educator pipeline. So there's definitely advocacy we'll be continuing to pursue. The governors, I had one of the slide, their messaging is that they have over $3 billion they have provided in investments for teacher and educator pipeline, classified employee recruitment, that at this point, I don't foresee them wanting to add more money, but we are continuing to advocate for that.
My concern is also the lack of, well, it was mentioned here, 550 million delay in the facilities grant for pre-K. Is this a concern? Like, because I know there, we're trying to get our facilities, our schools, up to par, you know, in terms of benches, making sure, you know, we have, our four-year-olds are so small, right? So we have to make sure that the buildings and the furniture and everything is, you know, adequate for, you know, four-year-olds and little babies, right? So would this be, you know, is this sort of like a, a obstacle or barrier or deterrent or delay that?
I would have to talk with Mr. Hovater to see if there's any, because again, I, I don't have the information right now about where we rank in the list of participation when it comes to the state matching funds, and whether we were planning to tap into any of those resources. Of course, we benefit from the state matching funds, because it means we can free up more of our local bond funds for additional projects. I don't know if Superintendent Carvalho would like to say anything else about it, but for the time being, there's no specific information I have about what it means for us in terms of our current projects. But if we have more information, we'll provide it to you at the next committee of the whole meeting.
And it was the last one, it was mentioned earlier, the equity multiplier. Can you expand on what that means and how that, you know, will affect us and how that serves us?
So we don't have any details except one paragraph to go off of. I mentioned typically that the Department of Finance, they released what's called the Trailer Budget Language, TBL, by February 1st, and that's a description of all the various programs. So I mentioned that the committee of the whole meeting on the 24th will be helpful, because whatever we see in writing, that we can come and translate what it means for us. The information that I have seen so far in that one paragraph in the Department of Finance and discussions with them, they indicated that it will be complementary to our CENI, to our Student Equity Needs Index formula. The funding will be targeted to school sites, so the allocation will be made to school districts that will then be going targeted towards specific school sites based on the student eligibility at those school sites. So again, very similar to CENI. I just don't know if it's exactly the same proposal that we have now in place or slightly different. And as I understand, there'll be a supplement, not supplant requirement within that $300 million statewide. It will be an interesting and important consideration for LA Unified, because we were an early adopter of this LA Unified initiative called CENI, what it means for us to have a supplement, not supplant, because the state, then, of course, the board and superintendent would want to continue keeping our current investments, but if the state's giving additional funds, we would have to do probably on top of what we already invest.
Yeah, I, I also read, it only said for high-need schools, so I wasn't sure if there's other criteria. So thank you so much, I look forward to the update.
And, and the one piece I'll distinguish there, the funding, as I understand, will be intended for students based on free meals, not reduced-priced meals. So they're really, really honing in on the highest-poverty children.
Sounds like they're listening to Ms. Goldberg's advocacy over many years on this. Ms. Goldberg. Mr. Schmelzner.
The Golden State Grant Program, familiar with it, correct? So that, let me see, that will award up to $20,000 to students who are currently enrolled in a professional preparation program. They have to complete their work within three years, and it sounds like a great thing for the teacher shortage. So I hope that we at LAUSD here are promoting that program to our, to our potential teachers, the Golden State Teachers Program Award.
And that was a request from CSEC, the Student Aid Commission, when I spoke to them yesterday, they've had over 5,000 applicants statewide be eligible for the funds, and definitely the eligibility of the funding has been expanded over the last three years.
Wonderful, and the applications are available until March 31st, so don't forget. Thank you.
Ms. Goldberg.
Yeah, I'm stuck on the, on the arts instruction. The Prop 28 did not take the funding out of Prop 98, it took it out of the general fund. So the anticipation was that it would reduce things in the general fund, and that could include healthcare, or poverty programs, or highways and road repair, it could come out of that. So the shortfall of 22.5 million in the state budget doesn't really, what I'm having trouble with is, is that if you get an 8.5% increase in the COLA, but you take out a 1.2 billion from the arts, then does that reflect the 8-point COLA?
So, thank you, and I took a two new ones. There is a portion of the COLA that is being proposed to be paid with state one-time money. So.
Really?
Yes.
That's not happening.
And my, my, again, recollection, another colleague here may clarify if I get anything incorrectly, I think of the, the over $4 billion for the 8.13% COLA, Sotterick COLA, I think it's roughly about 1.5 billion from my recollection as to how much would be one-time Prop 98, to be able to pay for that COLA. So the state, and I'm just capturing here my notes, the governor's proposing a mixture of funding delays, like an example at the facility program that Board Member Rivas asked about for TK and other programs, funding shifts. For our purpose, one might say that the swap of the Prop 28 to swap for the 1.2 billion, or to us, we would see that as a reduction. And then the third kind of approach that the governor's taking to address that 22.5 billion deficit is spending reductions. And so that would be, as an example, I mentioned $100 million to the state facility program, or the 1.2 billion for the arts instructional discretionary block grant. But, but a portion of the COLA is being proposed to be paid by one-time money from the state.
Has that happened before?
Well, if, if you think about the three-year multi-budget projections, so for the governor is this fiscal year, they're looking at the last fiscal year, and they're looking at a one year ahead. So the revenues, you know, will be updated as part of the April tax receipts, and then ultimately by May revise in May 15. So I cannot speak of, I can't remember off the top of my head if it's happened in the last few years, but.
I don't, not the six years I was there, we would never have even considered it. So that makes me nervous.
You know, that's why there's the May revise, and then I mentioned there's a 45 budget adoption opportunity, and of course, Mr. Hart, can I allude to anything else you'd like to, Mr. Hart, anything I can invite you to?
Two points, one, a clarification. Very clearly, Proposition 28 is not under 98, but it is anchored by the, the increase on a year-over-year basis in 28 is based on the change in funding for 98. Just to, just to give clarity on that. And so when the state is having the constraint, the fiscal constraint, they have to find the money somewhere. And as you know from your time in the legislature, there is that sort of unwritten rule of, is it 39%, is it 38%, is it 40? But you start to get above that, and the answer's no. And so you see that in the language associated with the governor's proposed budget, whether it's out of the governor's office or the legislature, and that is make spending reductions. To that point of your other question, I think the easiest way I'll put it is, you should be nervous. That they're using one-time funds.
Yeah, I should be nervous, oh, thank you very much. Okay, I'm, I'm reassured by that, certainly. Okay, I've really never heard of that before, I've really never heard of that before, so that's, that's just blows my mind a little bit.
I think, if I might, more remember, I think that's also, when you asked earlier, what is the future forecast for the COLA?
So that's why it's three-point something.
Well, I think there's a couple of things that are involved here. One is, if your forecast displays a lower COLA, and there is some debate as to whether or not that will hold, it does change your liability from a budget perspective on a go-forward basis. Secondly, while the CPI is very much an indicator, and there could be said to be correlation and maybe to a degree causality, the state, as you know, is not bound to put into the COLA what the CPI is.
Never.
And the Federal Reserve is, I think, being very aggressive, though the rate increases are slowing, inflation is coming down, and is the forecast, whether it's coming from state levels or federal levels, does anticipate that inflation will break below 5% within a reasonable period. This last, on a year-over-year basis, December to December was down markedly from initial forecasts at just 6.5%. So when they're putting in a COLA at 8.13, some would argue they're paying forward. But that's the circumstance that you find yourself in, and I think to echo sentiments hearing from OGR, there is a lot of, there's a lot of work to be done between now and the May revision, and as we have experienced the last couple of years, between the May revised and the June enacted.
So one could argue that with an 8% COLA, districts could choose to increase the amount of money for arts education, because it's getting a larger COLA than it's used to getting, and therefore you don't have to cut all of the current money for that.
Yeah, and I, I mean, choose, yes, would I consider it informed? No.
I think the Superintendent, Ms. Goldberg, would love to chime in on that question, too.
Fascinating conversation. So a Sacramento decision regarding a statewide COLA has different interpretations and realistic impacts downstream, depending on where those districts are, for example, as far as enrollment. So the fact that LAUSD is a district that has declined and continues to decline in enrollment, notwithstanding the fact that our rate of decline has slowed significantly, and I expect that maybe will even stop, and we may see an improvement over the next couple of years. Let's look at that 8.13% COLA, for example, statewide. That's not our COLA. Considering the fact that our rate of decline is a 2% or higher, that 8.13% COLA statewide becomes a 5.6% here in Los Angeles Unified. That means we will not have the same buying power as what the state proclaims out of Sacramento. So as David said to your question, Board Member, President Goldberg, we could make decisions to augment arts programs, to replace the promise, right, that was made to the people of California when they voted for that proposition. We could fill in the gap, but understand that this increase is the fuel force behind compensation increases, the stability of our healthcare investments and the like. So not necessarily prudent. But I appreciated the question, because people ought to know, once again. It's fascinating that we just had the, the chief auditor providing a report today, and then we have the governor's budget reality, and the recent past, which the audit report looks at, and the prospects of the near future are not necessarily dissimilar. There's a great deal of right arm to left arm transfusion of the same resource that does not necessarily increase the final position of the system. And then considering specific realities unique to Los Angeles Unified or other similarly situated districts in terms of declining enrollment, we do not fully realize that state COLA.
Thank you very much. My final question is, what's the federal government doing?
Oh, thank you for bringing it up. I had a note to mention, and I just went off on different comments. So given the recent turmoil and change of leadership in DC, congressional changes, the Republican-controlled House has indicated they would like to keep funding flat, maybe at the 2022 level. It's projected that the president's budget usually comes up by February 1st. Given that they had a delay in approving that continuation, continuing resolution for funding in December, it likely won't come out on. it likely won't come out until March. But at this time, everything points towards either a flat-funded budget, perhaps reductions, you know, the uncertainty. But definitely, we don't anticipate at this time, unless something changes, leadership changes, which won't be the case. We don't anticipate that there'll be significant investments as we've seen in the last few years, particularly with the one-time investment from the state or federal government.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just a couple of questions and I know the Superintendent has some more to add. Ms. Alvarez on page three, like the slide, slide three with those categorical programs, does the kind of back-of-the-envelope 10% rule still apply for these? You know, the literacy coaches or the cultural enrichment? Like, should we, you know, if it's 250 million for one-time funding for literacy coaches, is that going to be distributed per pupil? So we'd get roughly 25 million of that or is there a different formula?
No. It's a different formula. And again, we don't have the specifics, but the, the grant from this, so this is an increase 250 million dollars on top of what there's already at the state level, 250 million dollars. So they're doubling up the amount that was already available for literacy coaches. The current eligibility criteria is for schools, elementary schools that have a 97% free and reduced lunch price eligibility and maybe other criteria. So it's very, very targeted elementary schools. It's not a per-people amount and if it will be, it will be according to schools. I think the LAO estimates about 500, 600 schools at most throughout the state of California will be receiving it. So at this point, I don't think we have a precise calculation because we don't have the details. And then for the high school, it depends how many high school students we have. The estimate is 200 dollars per student.
So I think it could be helpful, it could be helpful maybe as a follow-up to just like on these categorical-ish programs, just an understanding of the, the distribution mechanism for each one of these. So maybe like just this slide with the next level of detail. I know I've asked this every year, but are you seeing with this governor's budget that there's a yet another move away from the discretionary local control formula? And they're doing more of these? I mean, can we anticipate more? I mean, even if it's things this board agrees with, arts and UTK and all that, there is less and less flexibility for districts the more we increase these categorical programs.
And that's a short concern, I think, from OGR and our finance team. Of course, Mr. Hart can come in and ask for any comments you'd like. But definitely that's a concern about the, the reduction of discretionary available funding to school districts. The equity multiplier, I think, is one of those examples. Of course, it complements our SENI initiative that we currently have in place, but it could also be perceived, should that money should have come to us in the LCFF format that we currently are funding because there will be additional plans tied to those additional dollars. And so it is going to be a lot of duplication of effort perhaps.
Well, on that, I appreciate Dr. Rivas's questions about the equity multiplier. But you know, we've got the LCFF base supplemental concentration, the staffing supplement, the equity multiplier. I mean, it's just, you know, from a school site perspective, understanding what and how you're going to get that funding is more complicated. So potentially next month at our COW, when we have an update, we may just need a whole presentation on what LCFF looks like because it definitely looks quite different than it did five, five years ago, 10 years ago.
I'll say five years because that's more within my wheelhouse. Board Member, the word I was going to use is complicated. What was thought to be straightforward, transparent, easily understood is increasingly requiring a LEA to take the time to unpack so that you can understand where it is you have discretion and it is increasingly fenced in. Strings are attached.
Yeah, with our own SENI, I mean, layered on, that's just incredibly complicated. I think that would be the word I'd use as well. Is there any advocacy around students with disabilities as a targeted category within LCFF? I mean, I know initially it was, it was pulled out and there's these amendments that we were alluding to. But is anyone advocating around students with disabilities in particular as a specific supplement?
Not at this point through LCFF. As I had in one of the slides, there was an increase to the base grant, AB 602, the special education formula in the last couple of years. And so the rate has increased over the last years and to our benefit, our students that we serve, but not through LCFF. Through the state preschool program, there was an additional funding adjustment factor for increasing the amount of students. There's a requirement by 2024, every provider of preschool will have to have at least 10% of kids in preschool through the state program to have disabilities, trying to create more inclusion and opportunities for kids. But again, that's through the CSPP, state preschool program, not through LCFF. And then if I may, because you brought up the advocacy, just to emphasize the opportunity for advocacy for us, one-third of the legislature this past November termed out or they chose not to, you know, pursue another term or so the term limits. They either also ran for other offices, et cetera. So it's basically a turnover from 2013, I mean, 2013, when Governor Brown on the legislature at the time passed LCFF. So a brand-new, mostly legislature that was not here 10 years ago. And so it's an opportunity for advocacy that we continue to pursue. The Board Superintendent and Board members will continue to remind the new members as to what LCFF has meant for our community, how we continue to embrace local control and discretionary engagement with our community members as opposed to state dictating what we spend the money.
Great. Yes, Ms. Goldberg.
In terms of advocacy, I would like to say that we should plan some actual trips by board members to Sacramento. The six years I was in Sacramento, not a single board member from LA Unified visited me when I was Chair of Assembly Ed. But every small district in the entire state sent delegations to meet with me. And it made a difference. It, it did inform me about what their problems were as opposed to the problems of the district that I had represented myself. So I do think that we have to gear up ourselves to do more actually in Sacramento on some of these issues because it makes a difference when board members show up.
Mr. Schmelzner.
But there are offices in Los Angeles of these same people, correct? Isn't that cheaper, more effective?
Cheaper and more effective, but not really entirely. Sometimes seeing them in Sacramento has a different impact. It really does. So I would say we need to do both.
Just trying to save us some money. Okay, all right, okay.
We can drive, we'll care of that.
I'm not suggesting we go on a monthly basis or anything like that. That is local. But I do think when they are discussing certain changes, like to LCFF or other things that really dramatically would impact this district, I do think we need to have some of us go on a revolving basis to make sure that those folks that are making those decisions hear from us directly.
Great. And I will say, to the extent that I interact or see legislators, they're often saying that they just met with or heard from Ms. Alvarez. So just kudos to your advocacy. You're definitely a known quantity and so we're grateful for your, your leadership and advocacy there. Superintendent, turn it to you.
Thank you very much. So I'm reminded, as I've been listening to the conversation by the, the comments made by our Board President after her election to this leadership role. She says, you know, I want to, I'm paraphrasing, redefine the role of the board in terms of its action on committees. We go through massive presentations with important information, important data, but what comes of it, right? And I subscribe to that. And it is following that, that mindset and theory of action. I'd like to enter some comments into the record for the benefit of the listening public and certainly our workforce and even legislators. There are two bookends specific to this conversation. We began today by really listening to an auditor's perspective on the financial viability of our school system. But that's a, a retroactive look. It's a rear-view mirror sort of approach to what's happened from a financial perspective. But the conclusion was very evident, right? And, and, and I asked the auditor to be more deliberate in telling us what he told us. We are experiencing a net negative position. Our finances are accurately stated. We do not have the level of reserves that I often hear people discussing out there in a community. Now, the other bookend is the governor's proposed budget. And that gives us a perspective look. So we had a, a rear-view mirror analysis of where we were, where we are. And this is the first indication of where possibly the state will go. But I want to provide some, some degree of caution because this budget has a lot. A lot of very good things, a lot of areas of concern and, and Board President Goldberg detailed some of them. You said, this is the first time that I see a COLA being somewhat foundationally established on non-recurring resources. Because COLA is to provide a district with that assurance that you can rely on the basis of economic indicators, it can rely into the future on the existence of that increase, one that we do not fully realize considering our declining enrollment perspective. But let's analyze a number of things. Our state is in a fragile position. I mean, usually as we enter these discussions as far as state budget is concerned, you may have some folks who say, eh, it may not get to be that bad. But so far, I have not heard any one entity saying anything other than brace yourself. There is unanimity as far as the outlook for the state of California. And here's the reason why. Number one, the state of California relies immensely on income taxes, corporate taxes, sales taxes, and any type of economic belt-tightening measure will have an immediate and lasting impact on state revenue collections. That's a reality. That's because cutbacks have such an important impact on income tax, which then impacts the amount of funding in Sacramento. This is not me saying it. The Legislative Analyst Office, LAO, estimates a 78% chance that revenues will be below the governor's budget. So for those who believe that the governor's budget is perhaps the high, you know, level possibility, not so. Close to 80% prediction on the basis of analysts, independent analysts, that more than likely, the governor's budget request is actually the rosest of perspectives that we will see statewide. And if we accept that, even without mentioning the possibility of a recession, which is not reflected in the governor's proposed budget, we could be looking at a 30 to 50 billion dollar direct impact in the near forecast. That means that 22.3 to 27 billion deficit position that has been discussed could actually more than double. It is a possibility. How much of a possibility? Well, according to the LAO analysis, 78% possible. We cannot discount that. In fact, the LAO's fiscal outlook for the next few years, actually through '26, '27, elevates that to about 100 million, a billion dollars. And that is without accounting for the possibility of a national recession. If there is a national recession, that number could get worse. If the United States of America, because of congressional inaction, defaults on its credit, then we will be in an accelerated path towards doomsday, which the LAO has already identified. Another way of saying this is a lot of attention being paid in Washington DC to things that don't impact quality of life or the financial condition of people and children at the expense of the issues that really matter. So here's the reality that we know. The Federal Reserve continues to raise interest rates. There's a decline in the stock market, actually a great deal of variability. There's a decline in home prices. There's a, an ongoing geopolitical turmoil, set of conditions that impact economic perspectives, particularly in the state of California. California is sort of the canary in the mine. When we read headlines about massive layoffs at Amazon, Google, Microsoft, that's a first indicator. Private sector layoffs lead public sector economic downturn. That's just the reality. Not all of this position is just a trend that we should not ignore. Why am I saying this? Again, following our Board President's declaration. We can have a lot of conversations, a lot of reports, a lot of analysis, right? But what does this really mean? What does the, the audit represent? And now what does this governor's budget request tell us? It's not the high mark, we know that. And when you really look at details, there's a lot of, again, right arm to left arm transfusion. There's really not a significant injection of additional revenues. And in fact, in fact, the LAO and others take a different approach to the governor's position. They're saying reduce now. Do not shift monies around reduce. So why is this important to us? You brought me here to be honest and to lead, not just in good times, to lead in precarious times. All in the indicators at this point suggest that times will more than likely get to be difficult. We should not put this district back into a position that the district was in a few years back. Significant investments into workforce to then be followed a year later by significant reductions of that same compensation increase coupled with layoffs. The indicators are here. Secondly, our current financial position is a strong one. Recently attested, not only by the three credit rating agencies that said so, but, but Standard and Poor's just came in this week and elevated our own rating. That is a good thing. But in every one of those reports, they detail what's ahead and they will observe the actions we will take. So Madam President, members of the board, you ought to take pride over the fact that you have provided staff with authorization to negotiate contracts that reflect a financial position that at this point is absolutely fundable, but could change dramatically in the near future. The more we wait, the less leverage we have. Second point, and I'm not disclosing anything that has not been made publicly available prior to today's meeting. We are adamant, based on the board's authorization, to meet and exceed inflationary pressures in Los Angeles if we are to retain, incentivize and recruit the workforce that we need, if we are to do right by our workforce at all levels. Teachers, certificated staff, classified staff, everyone and anyone who worked for LAUSD. We made this announcement a number of years back and our financial positions still allow us to live up to that announcement. The next point. Regardless of processes that are ongoing or declarations of entities, this board expects us to and we are adamant and desiring of continuing fruitful conversations at the table of negotiation for the benefit of our workforce. There's nothing that prevents legal proceedings from traveling in tandem, parallel to necessary, honest, transparent conversations so that we advance the ball of appropriate compensation for our workforce. This board ought to take pride in the fact that you stabilize healthcare conditions for our workforce. Not only future healthcare conditions for the retirees, but current, with massive investments to not pass down a single dollar of additional healthcare contribution from the employee to the system, maintaining those stable at a premium to the school system. To those who argue that we're sitting on billions of dollars of reserves, you heard from your auditor today. And I specifically asked questions. That is just not so. So we have a golden opportunity to actually advance the ball. Particularly now, after two and a half years of a massive pandemic that stressed and caused trauma on everyone. After a social unrest that we observed during that time period. After mass shootings that continue to happen in our state. I see LAUSD as a force of stability, of normalcy to our community, beginning with our workforce. So I want to convey to you, Madam President, to this entire board and to anyone who's listening, that we have a moral and professional responsibility, but also an opportunity to bring that normalcy to our workforce, beginning with our workforce. Economic conditions are not going to improve. They're going to decay significantly over time. Our multi-year projection reflects that. Reflects a rapid depletion of reserves over a very short period of time. Our declining enrollment position will not allow us to fully realize the COLA. Those are realities. So our students, our families, our staff just lived through a whole lot. So our students, our families, our staff just lived through a whole lot, massive disruptions. We need to resolve compensations issues here and now. We have the opportunity to do so. The last point I will make is, based on publicly known, publicly offered elements specific to the negotiation process, we are already beating not only inflationary pressures locally, but looking historically and what has been negotiated in the state of California and across the country, we are already at or above those levels. But we can do better. And the Board knows that we have the latitude to do better, and we look forward to the opportunity to accelerate the process for the benefit of our workforce. Waiting will not serve this district well, considering all of the financial and economic indicators that have been presented to us today, that we have read in terms of the governor's budget request, and in terms of the truth that was disclosed in today's audit presentation. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman and Madam President, members of the Board, for the time.
Thank you, Superintendent. Thank you, Mr. Hart. Ms. Alvarez, appreciated, and we'll continue the discussions, but thank you for that compelling distillation, Superintendent. And if there are no further questions or follow-ups, we'll let that be the last word. We will now transition to our instructional calendar update and discussion. I know Dr. Estrada, I think, has some introductory remarks. The next, oh, the next presentation. Okay, so we'll just go to Mr. Chait. I will note for the Board and the public, there is a new version that was emailed of the instructional calendar presentation. Mr. McLean, is that, I don't know where my mic just went. Oh, there he is. Is that up on the website yet? It is. Okay, getting a thumbs up. So for the public, the most recent version is posted. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Chait.
Thank you, Mr. Melvoine. Good morning, Superintendent and Board of Education. As Mr. Melvoine already referenced, today I will be presenting a summary report around the work completed to gather input for the Board adoption of a three-year instructional calendar cycle. I do want to also mark my appreciation for your flexibility this morning as we did generate an updated version of the documents for your review. So again, as I've mentioned, and I think we all know, the instructional calendar for the district is subject to Board approval. In order to make the most informed recommendation to you, the Board, the Division of School Operations gathers feedback from a number of key stakeholders. First and foremost, of course, our families who we serve. Second, we met with our labor partners as the representatives and voice of all of our employee bases. And of course, we also had an internal dialogue for any of our divisions to flag any concerns that they may see around the calendars being considered. All versions of the calendar that will be presented to you today for consideration include, of course, the following. All of the holidays and unassigned days for each year have already been embedded. Per state requirement, each school year has 180 instructional days. We, of course, also have our two pupil-free days, one before the first day of school and the other after the last day of school. Lastly, you'll see that the first semester that concludes that winter break has at least, and I want to mark that, at least 18 weeks in that semester so that we provide as much balance as possible between semesters, and of course, to assist our many four-by-four schools, primarily high schools, with meeting state PE requirements. In looking at calendar options for the next three-year cycle, consideration has been given to shifts in the vacation schedules for the next three years. We asked our respondents to consider basically the following: either a two-day Thanksgiving break, many of us may recall that was the practice when I started with the district in the '90s, it was a two-day break, or to maintain the one-week Thanksgiving break that we've had now for a number of years. Similarly, we asked folks to consider options around a winter break, should we shift back to a two-week break, which again, has been a historical practice and is in greater alignment with other school districts, or maintain the current three-week break. The family survey was open and available through January 9th through 19th. Folks could access it through a number of platforms. It was, of course, available on the website itself. Families were also sent the link directly via text so that it was as accessible as The survey was very concise in the questions that we asked our respondents. We really only asked them for four pieces. The sort of bookend pieces are essentially demographic. One, on the left side, is again identifying at what levels of our school system their children are matriculated, elementary, middle, or high school. And then on the right side, what region their school corresponds to. We did give an option of not sure in case we had any respondents that didn't have that information handy. And then, of course, really, the meat of the survey were the two questions in the middle, as already referenced, one around Thanksgiving break and one around winter break. I want to mark that we provided clarity. There were some folks who said, well, if we make one shorter, does that actually extend the school year, meaning the academic days? So if you'll see in the asterisk in the parens, we did clarify that making one break shorter essentially makes another break, namely summer vacation, longer. Through the life of the survey, we had pretty robust participation. We had over 52,000 responses provided to us as part of the survey. And again, what I want to mark in this slide right here is that the participation in the survey very closely aligns to our enrollment as a district. You'll see, for example, that, you know, of course, the majority of our students are at the K to five level, and similarly, the majority of our responses were received from families that have students in the K to five. So we believe that the survey results were pretty representative of the LAUSD family. Now, this is just getting into the actual results of the survey itself. As you'll see, for the question around Thanksgiving break, we had 78% of respondents that indicated that they would like to preserve the current week-long Thanksgiving break. For our three-week winter vacation, the response came in at about 71% of our respondents who indicated that they would like to maintain the three-week break. And again, the pie graph on the right gives you a sense of the regions that responded. We also met, as I referenced earlier, with our labor partners. We had two meetings with folks, one before the winter break and one after. The majority of our unions were represented at at least one, if not both, of the meetings. In summarizing their feedback, and I did ask them if I could, you know, not looking to speak on behalf of anyone, but capture their consensus, their consensus was to maintain the current schedules. In other words, a one-week Thanksgiving break and a three-week winter break. They also elevated some additional employee-level concerns around, or feedback, rather, around why this might be the best practice. One that was echoed by pretty much everyone at the meeting was that our employees, while a longer summer break has its value, that our employees appreciate having breaks embedded into the year so that during Thanksgiving, they can have one week to rest and recharge, and similarly around winter break, have three weeks. At least one of our labor partners brought up the possibility that having this vacation schedule might make us a more attractive employer. If you're a teacher and you're considering LAUSD and maybe a couple of other districts, seeing that schedule might be something that tips you one way or the other. And lastly, for our folks that represent our classified employees that are not annualized, and we know we certainly have a significant number of employees that are not, that having a longer summer break creates an even longer stretch of time wherein those employees are not receiving a regular paycheck. Now, I know that in previous calendar adoptions, there has been consideration given to a later start date for the school year. We are advocating strongly, based on a number of academic factors, for maintaining a mid-August start date. I want to mark that the majority of the direct impacts academically are on our high school students. An August start, of course, allows for the completion, the full completion of the fall semester prior to winter break. Some of us may recall that in the old schedule, when we did begin closer to Labor Day, high school students would have to come back and then take their finals after winter break, which is certainly less than ideal. This also creates a clean break, meaning that during the vacation, we can actually give targeted intervention to our students based on the outcomes from the first semester. And again, I know that many of our students actually finish, they essentially graduate in December, and so this would allow them to matriculate directly into a community college or sometimes even a university in January. A few additional academic benefits. Again, of course, this means that we have additional instructional time prior to the AP exams, gives our counselors and other staff at our schools more time to work with seniors around completing college apps, FAFSA completion. And of course, we now have 35 high schools that are on a four-by-four schedule. So keeping this earlier start allows them to meet state requirements around having at least 18 weeks in the first semester for physical education. So now I'm going to walk us through the proposed calendars for the next three years. And I want to call out that, again, we have a lot of information coming up on these slides. So we'll go one step at a time. So the first thing that I want to mark is that regardless of the calendar that is ultimately adopted for each year, the actual start date each year remains consistent. So for next year, the start date, regardless of calendar, would be Tuesday, August 15th. Those of us that have worked at school sites may remember that there has been the historical practice where the Monday is the pupil-free day, teachers and staff come in, do their final preparation, and then Tuesday is the day when students come. And that's consistent throughout the three-year cycle. So August 15th is a Tuesday, August 13th is a Tuesday, and so is August 12th. As you work towards the right on this document, and again, I'm going to go year by year in just a second, you'll see the various options. So for Thanksgiving break, there's a one-week option, which of course is connected to either a two-week winter break or a three-week winter break. And of course, again, we could also have a two-day Thanksgiving, which would correspond, again, to a two-week or a three-week break. Depending on which option we select, or the Board approves, rather, that, of course, triggers a different first day for the second semester. I want to mark that for next year, if we have a three-week winter break, that Monday when we would normally be back is actually the Dr. King holiday, so students would return on Tuesday, the 16th. That's only for the first year. It doesn't happen in year two or year three of this cycle. You'll also see that depending on which calendar is adopted, the last day of instruction either falls, of course, in May or June. So now we're going to go through the graphic for each of the three years. Again, just to orient us, because I understand, of course, that this is very print and color-heavy, the top purple row represents a one-week Thanksgiving, two-week winter break schedule. The second black row represents a one-week Thanksgiving, three-week winter break schedule. I like to think of that one as essentially the status quo. That is what we have in practice right now. The third green row represents a two-day Thanksgiving, a two-week winter break. So that, you could consider that sort of the most abbreviated schedule during the actual school year. It has the longest summer vacation, of course, because of the fact that it's the shortest. And then the fourth and final blue row represents a two-day Thanksgiving and a three-week winter break. Again, for this specific year, '23, '24, I've already shared that the Dr. King holiday would come right before students come back. I also want to mark again that for the green row across all three years, that's the shortest calendar possible, we're looking at a last day of school occurring in May. Similarly, the following year, '28, '24, '25, again, we're looking at that August 13th start date, regardless of calendar selected, that's a Tuesday. And depending on the option selected, our last day of school could vary anywhere from as early as May 27th to as late as June 6th, again, depending on the configuration selected. And finally, for the last year of this three-year cycle, an August 12th, a Tuesday, August 12th start date, regardless of calendar selected, and again, depending on which is selected, we're looking at an end date for the school year as early potentially as May 27th or as late as June 8th. So with that, I thank you for your time and attention, and of course, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Chait. And we'll start on the other side this time with Ms. Ortiz Franklin.
Thank you. Yes, definitely appreciate the three-year prospectus. I know that's something the Board has been asking for, and I think will be really comforting to our school staff and our families once we do get to the point of deciding. A couple of questions. The survey seems really clear, but I wonder if we missed some data that would be important. Did we capture race, or BSAP school, or SENI level, or English Language Learner, Special Education student, like any of those other sort of equity factors that we might want to consider when looking at the sampling that we have?
No, those were not part of the survey.
So I mean, given that, this is about 11% of our enrollment participated, do we feel like we have an adequate amount of responses already, or are we still going to collect information from families, ensuring that we get some of the most diverse voices, some of the most high-need students and families to weigh in on this?
Can I also just ask a clarifier to Mr. Chait? From a survey, were families or members of the public able to answer the survey more than one time? Like, could I have gone in and done 100 different responses? Or was it verified in terms of, here's my, like, student ID number or whatever?
So there wasn't a verification process, but from, how do I put this? From sort of the back end of the House, namely ITD, we could look at URL addresses, or, excuse me, that's the wrong term, but basically where folks were logging in from to potentially see duplicative responses.
So just to, and then we'll go back to Ms. Franklin, but the 52,000 responses, do we think that represents 52,000 students, or 52,000 families, or 5,000 families?
It's representative primarily of families. Going back to Ms. Ortiz Franklin's question, while this is not a perfect answer to what you asked, if you look at the breakdown of responses, we did have significant participation across all regions. So again, we do have from Region East, we had 34% of our responses, excuse me, rather, 13% of our responses came from Region East, 16% from North. We had good representation from West as well. So generally speaking, across the district, we had a fair amount of responses. To your question, as far as drilling down to a more specific demographic identifier, we can certainly engage in a process where we meet with families. That would probably be the best format. Putting another survey out, I think, might be a little confusing for folks at this point.
Yeah, absolutely. And I think from my perspective, I would appreciate a bit more intentionality around our highest-need students, some of the groups that I named earlier, I think just to make my own decision. Because generally, we anticipate that families that participate in online activities with a 10-day window probably had some more access to information and maybe are more regularly participating in school activities. And so I don't know if it would be too late to perhaps line it up with the LCAP input conversations or to have some sort of focus groups. And so maybe that question then is also, like, what's our timeline in terms of decision-making? We always want to decide sooner rather than later, but there's a bit of a balance here between making a decision too soon with too few input or information. Again, this survey is great, and it's going in the right direction, but just for me, I would be really, you know, hard-pressed to not have particularly the voices of those that we know most need to give us their thoughts on the school year and how it impacts childcare and all of those sorts of things.
On behalf of DSO, we're happy to work with our families to get some more of that specific feedback that you're requesting.
Okay, thanks. And then my last question, if we were, not saying that we will, to land on like a two-week, two-day, which is sort of the biggest shift from where we are now, would we contemplate like a gradual change? So next year, we still keep the three-week, one-week, and then go to a two-week, one-week, and then a two-week, two-day, you know, sort of going from the gray to the pink to the green or something like that so that people kind of get used to it? That might get more complicated. I was just curious if the team had thought we might want to do something like that, or that might not work out so well.
It's certainly a possibility. Again, the Board would have the ability to adopt a three-year calendar and do sort of that staggered release that you've referenced. I would say, putting my parent hat back on as a district parent, I think that might lead to some, it makes the messaging around the calendars a little less streamlined and fluid, but it's certainly an option.
Thanks. Yeah, looking forward to the discussion on this.
Thank you, Ms. Ortiz Franklin. Ms. Goldberg?
See, here's what I worry about. You got 71% that say it's fine to do three weeks, but you got 25% that say it's not. And the 25%, I'm going to bet, are low-income workers who get no vacation time. Okay? So what we do is we set up a calendar for people who get vacations, but we don't take into account the impact on the people who don't get vacations. And that's my concern. I hear continuously... I hear continuously from constituents, "I don't know what to do with the kid the third week." Because when there are activities, it's for two weeks, because most of the other school districts in Southern California are two weeks. So I'm leaning to keeping Thanksgiving, even though that's a problem, but it's only a couple of days, and going to two weeks for the winter holiday. I know that's not popular. 71% think it won't be popular. But I'm worried about the folks for whom this is a real problem, every single year, of what to do with the kids, when they don't get any time off. They don't get vacation days. They don't get paid vacation days. They don't get unpaid vacation days. They don't get any time off. If they take time off, they lose their job. And I'm worried about the impact of three weeks on them, which we've done for years and years and years. And every year, and I'm not surprised that 71% like it, because I think probably 71% of our family have vacation days. Paid or unpaid, some may be unpaid, but at least they get vacation time off. So for them, three weeks is great. So that's my concern. And I don't know how to deal with that, because for the 71% who love it, they're not going to like this if we do this. On the other hand, my concern has always been for the folks who don't get any time off, don't get vacation days, and what do they do with the kids? Thank you.
We can, we can very quickly work with our regions and with parent and community services to get parent groups via region, where we try to identify, again, sort of some of the same demographic markers that Ms. Ortiz Franklin already flagged, so you have that additional data point.
Thank you. Mr. Schmelzner?
Just a caution about Thanksgiving. It seems that Wednesday is a day where you'll need a zillion substitutes at school. As a principal, I've seen that. All of a sudden, people call in Wednesday, sick. So we have to be realistic, and I'm really strongly for the one week of Thanksgiving. The rest we can discuss, but that's, that's a very painful subject, having to cover a million classes on that Wednesday, I remember. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Dr. Rivas?
And as a parent, every year, you know, this question comes up, and from what I've known, we're just creatures of habit. We just like, you know, well, we like consistency, right? And we plan around it. But I also share in the concern that, you know, the survey went to very few parents, and I think the timeframe was really short. For me, I was like, oh my God, I can't forget, you know, I'm also parents that, oh, I have to fill it out. But, you know, I know doing another one would, you know, be confusing. However, we have this wonderful presentation, and I think it would be great to reach out to community reps and our parent community services to say, hey, these are the three. So from the results, these are, you know, some ideas, and weigh in, now that I can actually can see it, right? And, and I think, I share in the concern as well, is the ones that the responder, the responders that this doesn't work, it would be good to have why or why not, open-ended questions. So we understand what are, what are the reasons why this does not work with them. Because then we can identify what are the reasons why, what are the obstacles, who do we need to reach out to the most? So I think we really need to reach out to our parents in a little bit bigger fashion, larger fashion. I know we want parents to be part of Parent Portal. The schools are out there, it's like, have you done your Parent Portal? Have you done this? So I know that you can be really aggressive when you really want to get some input, so that's all. Thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Rivas.
Thank you. Dr. McKenna?
Yeah, I have maybe antiquated feelings about this, but I'm antiquated anyway. I remember when we had, for years, before we even implemented this, Thanksgiving was Thursday and Friday-only holidays, and winter break was two weeks, spanning Christmas and New Year. You came back to school after the holiday break. This comfort level that we have here is because people have different economic circumstances and different political influences on the board, and the majority of the board, changed that. The lengthy three-week vacation for, in the winter break, and I agree with Ms. Goldberg, does not really consider, even though the vote tells you one thing, you don't know who voted for what, because that wasn't disaggregated, that people don't have, not just don't have vacations, they don't have income, and they don't have income to protect their children with childcare services. And the other impact of it is, when you get teenagers, some of them who do need to be supervised, unsupervised during the day for a whole week, I can tell you, they don't sit in their houses. Some of them find a way to get together, and they're out on the street, and that's wonderful for them. What students would not want to be on the street during what used to be school days? They like to be on the street three days a week during school day. I don't begrudge them that. They're teenagers. That's who they are. I remember being a teenager, too. I don't think that this is equitable, but it's what becomes popular and politically correct to talk about. And people who can take vacations and go skiing and things like that, and these, there are people who can't even get in a car and go to the mountains, or afford a plane ticket. Don't know how to ski, and they don't want to be cold anyway, et cetera, et cetera. I'm not begrudging people who want to be out there with their children and can afford to. Most of our school district is not that. But they're also not as engaged in terms of voting. I hear the people come and complain about, we don't engage them enough, but when they do get a chance, they don't, they don't reflect it in their voting. And there is no differentiation here as to which, which areas voted for what, and what grade levels. I see, you know, I'm trying, but I can't disaggregate it. But my suspicion is not just a suspicion, it's an experience, is that the less, pardon you, less affluent families are not advantaged by the extended winter break. Their children are not overachieving anyway, so what do they benefit by, more or less academic involvement? I remember the days when we didn't finalize grades until after the winter break, because there were final exams given after they came back. And they had time to study. The procrastination of teenagers is well-known. Have you studied? Have you turned in your term papers? Have you done, I haven't even read my book report. I know it's due tomorrow. I know, I have three weeks, four months to do it. I'm still, well, last minute, all that kind of stuff. So you rush it, get it done, in order to say that the successful students, more successful students, are able to complete those, those things. When Mr. Schmelzner talks about the reality of what happens on a Wednesday, because teachers will take vacation days, they get sick, always on that Wednesday. They get sick on Fridays before the holidays. In the Martin Luther King situation, I guarantee you, I don't have the data, but I can guarantee you, that when the holiday was on a Monday, Friday was a high vaca, high absenteeism day. They got sick on that Friday, don't come to work. So now we have to put substitutes in there. The classified employees, we don't need substitutes for them to cover for children. They just don't show, and they don't get paid. So I'm, I'm not ready to this, because we've been doing it. Why we started doing it, I think it was political. It wasn't necessarily advantageous. To some people, it is. To others, it is not. I have another question I'd like to ask, I can't find the page, I think it's on page nine. It says, "Labor partners' input." And then it says in the right-hand box, "Recommendations." The last one there, it says, "Classified hourly employee pay is not annualized, therefore a longer summer remains a longer stretch of unpaid days." Two questions in that. Is that a recommendation, or is that just an observation? And if classified hourly employee is not annualized, what keeps us from annualizing it? It seems like a system fix. It seems like a technical, you tell the computer, this is what you want to do, annualize them. Why can't they be annualized? I don't know. Maybe that's something I don't know. I'm sure there are more things I don't know than I do know. But if the certificated people can be annualized, why can't the classified people? So if they have a longer stretch of unpaid days, would they be more willing to, to not take a position if they had an annualized pay scale? So they get the same pay. And if they had to work during the holidays, maybe they get more pay. That I don't know. So I'm just, I'm just ruminating here. I'm not making any suggestions to my colleagues. I'm just telling you what I think. At some point, we're going to have to vote on this. I think we're going to get a lot of lobbying from parent groups. It's not what we ought to do, what we should do. But they don't get to make the final decision. And I know, you know, that sounds egotistical, but I have no ego in this. I have student interest in this. I'll give you another example, is when we get ready to, and we've done that several times, get ready to hire a new superintendent. We've changed superintendents very frequently in this district. Since I've been here, I've seen four superintendents, maybe five, maybe four, five. I'm going to get the pictures over here. Let's see, one, two, three, four, five. I've seen five. I've been here nine years. Nine years. And, and the notion of, the community says, "We want to interview the candidates." And the other time says, "We want to know who they are." And I have consistently said, "We don't need to tell you any of that. You elected me to select the superintendent. You don't get to interview the candidates for superintendent. That's unfair. We didn't, we thought you were going to be on our side. I am on your side. But you can't select the superintendent, because you don't evaluate the superintendent, you don't supervise the superintendent. We do." So you have to have the faith that what you voted for us allows us to make that decision. And legally, you can't supervise the superintendent. Now, you get to meet afterwards, but we want to see, we want to narrow it down to three candidates, and we want to interview these three candidates, and you want a beauty contest. And so they come around and talk to you, and what are your votes going to mean then? The ones that vote count? The people that don't get to vote at all, they don't count? They don't care, they want us to do it? Those kind of things come into the politics of it, not the, shall we say, the experiential and existential, existential need for board members taking responsibility for determining what's best for children, what's best for families. I'm not suggesting we don't get input, but the input here is selective, as it, as it always will be, because we don't tell people not to vote, but they choose not to vote. We know when, when employees don't come to school on certain times, especially the teachers, because they affect the students. We don't need substitutes for everybody, but we need substitutes for teachers. And so I have never believed that a three-week winter break was beneficial to anybody, but people who could afford to do something with those three weeks, economically afford to do with those three weeks. And the other people who don't have the options, economic options, don't have the travel flexibility, don't have the travel income, can't afford not to go to work, and so they can't leave their kids at home, especially the younger kids, they need childcare. If they have extended families, some of them carry that weight. If they have grandmas and nanas and all of that. Other single-family moms, she may not have all of that. Her elders may not exist in her family. So how does she take care of her kids when she goes to work, because they're at home, because we're not having school? How does she feed them? If they come to school, we feed them. They don't come to school, what do you do? Now, they have been accustomed to doing this. People of lesser means are survivors. They may not ever thrive, but staying alive is thriving. I've seen homeless people trying to thrive, and now they're not suicidal. They want to stay alive. They even have a dog. Have no home, no income, no job, but I have a dog. And I'm trying to keep that dog alive by doing whatever I can on a daily basis to keep that dog alive. That takes a lot of courage. Takes a lot of other things, too. And it lacks some other things as well. That's the human condition we live in in Los Angeles. We have decisions to make, and other political groups in this city, including city council and state senators and state assembly people, they don't have this dilemma. They have to let us make those decisions. They try to influence us, maybe, just like one politician already told us, "School ought to start later, because high school kids need more sleep." Put it a bit earlier, that's what you ought to do. But no, they don't know they're affecting the whole schedule of people's employment. So the kids can come to school at 9 o'clock, or I don't know how late it is now. In the high schools, in the football games in the summit in the fall, if they have no lights, if they're starting later, it's a terrible thing, because they wind up in the dark trying to play a football game. I have thoughts about this. I've listened every year to the various arguments, but I heard Mr. Schmelzner's, and it's his experience, that on that Wednesday before Thanksgiving, they're going to bail out, and he's got to cover all those classes. On the other hand, a lot of students don't come either. We know that. That doesn't mean you don't have a class, but you won't have as many in the class. Sometimes you have to collapse classes. When you don't have, sometime the administrator has to cover the class. I've done that, I know he may have to do that. Can't get enough subs? Everybody needs to, oh, God's children need subs. And so you don't have enough subs, the administrators fill in and cover the class. You collapse a couple of classes, take them into the auditorium and teach them, because that's where you are. So we've gotten caught, we've caught ourselves, the system calls the board. We're not all the same board. We've caught ourselves in this routine. And so we start with the same recommendations, not recommendations, observations and voting. But I don't think, as I, as Bob was saying, it's not equitable, because it's not fair enough, because you don't, you can't, which, can you disaggregate all that? You could, but it has to be very detailed to go out there and do it again. I don't know. I don't think anybody but us has, has seen the results. But what do results mean? Anyway, did I solve anything? Nope. I didn't expect to. But at least you gave me some time to speak. I've had the experience where, McKenna, you're talking too long. Okay, here we go again, but I'm taking myself out right now, because I don't need to ruminate on this too long. But I'm not sure this is the best schedule. I would like to see a reduction of non-instructional days. I think we need more instructional days. One more thing, when we, when the superintendent offered us, I thought wisely, an opportunity to put some more instructional days in. Some of our labor partners said, oh, no, oh, no, 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 don't do that. So we let the kids get an opportunity. Many didn't show up. We wanted more to show up. Some did. We took credit for the ones that did. A lot more didn't. I've seen, we have computer, computer programs and computer labs at school, specifically designed for the underachieving child. If you go into most of those computer labs, the underachieving children are not there, they've gone home. It's an after-school program, and the ones who are in there are the advanced kids, trying to catch up on their work, trying to make sure they get their college stuff in, trying to pass the AP classes, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So the kids that are disaffected, disinterested, they stay disinterested. And that becomes our role in the school site, not from the political posture of a board member, to say, you have to grab them by the collar sometime and say, no, you can't go home, please don't go home, and keep on calling them. I've told new teachers, if the parents are ignoring you when you call home to talk about the student, and they hang up on you, what do you do? You call them again, that's what you do. And then when they still keep hanging, what do you do? You keep calling them. You're doing it on behalf of the child. You have to be in aggravation sometimes, on behalf of the child, that the disinterested, disaffected parent who's reflecting what they did in school, they didn't want to do all this, they don't, they don't want to have to come up. You handle them, I don't know why you keep calling me. Man, mister, don't call me, I can't be bothered with you. I'm going to call you again, ma'am. I might have to knock on your door, and I've done that. That's not, I want to advise all of that, but persistence is important. I heard Ms. Goldberg talk about one, about tenacity. You have to be tenacious. You don't give up on parents who are so overloaded, or maybe unavailable, to educate their children, and they leave that to us. Drop them off in kindergarten, pick them up in 12th grade, and just take whatever they get. They don't have aspirations of being university-educated. They're just trying to get them out. So all of that's part of the human condition called public schools, and we're all stuck in it. But we want it to be here. Nobody made us be here, right? So don't complain about being here, because you have to get in it in order to understand it, and maybe to fix it, maybe to make it better. Maybe you can't fix it, but maybe we can consider all the options before we make another vote. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Dr. McKenna. My questions seem rather perfunctory after talking about the human condition, but I will, I'll try to keep it related. Thank you, Mr. Chait. I'll say that I think this is the most controversial thing we do, so-- So I'm glad we're doing it in a three-year trunk, chunk to kind of keep the peace. But it's, these, you know, questions and comments are excellent, and I know we'll discuss it in the coming weeks. But this is, at least in my tenure and as a teacher as well, one that is, you know, it's very hard to circle the square. I will say that just looking at some of these drafts, having, you know, having the second semester start after Martin Luther King Day just seems very incongruous, like for parent, like with the rest of the world, and seems out of touch. As a first observation, I also think, along with Ms. Goldberg and others about the survey, I'd be curious with the three-week break, if we can disaggregate by elementary families and high school families, the difference being childcare. If your student can stay at home or be out with friends, even if they're getting into some trouble, as Dr. McKenna alluded to, they can at least be on their own versus elementary school parents, really, that third week is tough, a third week in a day. I also think, you know, this year was an anomaly in the positive in that we started school on a Monday. But I do think that trying to align our timeline to the average person or parent, starting things on a Monday, ending on a Friday, is just easier from a childcare perspective than starting on a Tuesday or having these random days. That all being said, a few questions, some of which you may have the answer for now, others maybe we'll just table for future conversations, but in no particular order. So each of these drafts do have 180 days, but only 180 days. And I'm curious for you or the superintendent, if we are contemplating again a calendar that has longer instruction, more instructional days or at least more instructional minutes within some days?
Yes, we envision that becoming a reality again. Obviously, we will engage the necessary parties to ensure that some of the, as we did this year, some of the opposition and, and some of the disruptions that we observed are avoided. But that is absolutely the intent.
Great. Thanks. Because I know, I mean, it says these all have at least 180. They have exactly 180, so would love to see about increasing them. I also think it was really effective, and I got great feedback from principals, but also teachers about the optional buyback days at the start of the school year. And I know, and just meeting with my teacher advisory group last night, actually, in preparation for this conversation about the calendar, a lot of requests for more people-free days. And I'm curious if we've explored or can continue to explore those buyback days, you know, for starting school on August 15th or 16th, maybe we would do it the week prior. But I think more people-free days, more teacher professional development days is something we hear from, from teachers, and I think it would be helpful. So I don't know if that's contemplated or if we can think about that.
So the proposals as presented would not in any way preclude us from adding those buyback days. So in the example you gave, if teachers are already coming on Monday for the people-free, which is obviously mandatory, certainly we could schedule buyback days for the preceding Thursday and Friday.
And I think attendance was pretty high on those days. So doing it as an optional basis, obviously with an incentive of getting paid, could be all that's needed. But I would love us to look at, you know, the start of each semester PD. One of the questions I've received from teachers and some parents is, have, have we thought about two weeks for winter break and two weeks for spring break? Which is, I know, what some districts, some independent schools do. So it gives employees and families the same number of breaks within the school year, but separates it a little more.
That's not one of the options we had contemplated at this point.
Yeah, I'd be curious, and, you know, I think it's something that, I know I've mentioned in the past, but helps break up the, the semester slightly differently. So just flagging that. I'm curious, I've never really understood why we have admissions day off. I didn't know that was a thing until working for the district. But it does give the four-day weekend over Labor Day, but also is a, an, a missed instructional day. So I'm cur, I mean, I don't know if that's a sacred cow, but I'm curious if in getting an extra sacred cow, pun intended, running the cow, okay. But sacred, if that's something that we could think about removing as another instructional day, in the alternative, I know that we see really poor attendance the day after Halloween, and some districts do give that day off. So the, the four-day weekend in September has some benefits, but we're also just starting the school year. So you get in a rhythm, and then you miss four days. I'm curious if we would look at removing admissions day as a, as a day off or having that day some, some other time in the, in the school year. I'll also say, too, that similar with that rhythm, I think another challenge with the three-week winter break that I've just seen as an instructor is, you know, the last week of the semester in December is either finals at the high school level, maybe it's performances and holiday celebrations. Then you have three weeks off, then you come back, then you have Martin Luther King Day, or in this case, you have that extra day. So it is just a really long break from the instructional continuity perspective. That being said, I know that our employees and speaking for the teachers I spoke with last night, they do all appreciate that three-week winter break. So I know that when we've discussed this, there's kind of an interest divergent between maybe our families on one hand, or disaggregating within families and our employees. But the last two questions, where does SBAK testing fall? Is that accounted for in these draft calendars in terms of when the continuity of spring testing would be versus spring break or various people-free days?
I'll have to get back to you on those specific dates if they've already been shared. But generally speaking, the SBA window is roughly April, you know, mid, excuse me, actually, now it's a little earlier, mid-March to April.
Yeah, so just making sure that with spring breaks there, we're like taking that into account. And then the last thing, which is, I'm, I'm curious, besides the, the community feedback, is there data that you're aware of, or the superintendent you're aware of, that between calendar and student achievement? Like, is there, I mean, is there best practices in two-week winter break or three-week winter break besides what employees want or families want? Like, does, do we have any data that shows, here's an instructional calendar that isolating for all other factors leads to higher achievement? Does that exist?
So there is research that indicates that there are models that work better than others. Obviously, those that reduce or seek to prevent a learning loss, you know, the, the so-called summer slide. If you have any one break besides the summer that are somewhat lengthy in nature, there is an impact. It is not an impact that's felt across the board by all students. It has an impact that is disproportionately seen in the most vulnerable students. ELs, students in poverty, you know, the unhoused, kids in foster care who need the routine, the normalcy of schooling because they depend not just on the education provided, but also the social support, the food, health screenings, et cetera. So yes, and in fact, your question puts me in a position of getting staff to prepare a digest of, of research specific to this issue in advance of the next discussion of this matter.
I, I would appreciate that because I know, and I've seen data around assessing students in August and then June and then August, and actually seeing the most significant declines are not between quote-unquote "high-performing" or "low-performing" schools, August to Septem, to June, but between affluent kids and less affluent kids between June and August because some kids are doing summer school or getting enrichment or have parents who are able to give them opportunities and others aren't. And so, I mean, I'm not saying that we suggest we go back to something that looks like a more year-round calendar with more instructional days, but just letting the research inform us on that, you know, we have some, imperfect as it may be, some community feedback on the, the three-week winter break, but looking at, you know, is that lack of instruction between basically like second week of December and now the third week of January, you know, is there data there? So I know that was a lot, and some were, some thank you for the answers. Some I know maybe we'll look into, like the admissions day, but appreciate that. Last question is just about the process. Where to from here? I know we're already at, being asked by a lot of community members and parents for a calendar as they're thinking about summer school schedules, summer vacation for some families. I'm curious just what the anticipated next steps are.
So a couple of pieces. First and foremost, you know, we now have obviously some additional homework, meeting primarily with focus groups that are more representative of our parent demographics across the district. That's something that we can stand up relatively quickly. I anticipate in probably a week, we can have that data. The digest that Superintendent Carvalho alluded to around, you know, practices across other school districts. Is there any correlation between a two-week break, three-week break, and actual student achievement? That's also something that we can turn around relatively quickly. The most streamlined, accelerated timeline for adoption would be potentially at the February 7th meeting, but certainly that's contingent upon the board feeling satisfied that it has the information it needs to make the best decision.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Chade. Any other questions or comments from the board? Thank you very much. We have one final present, we have one final presentation before public comment, before we get to our SBAK and NAEP progress update. I know the superintendent wanted to speak briefly about Open Gov and some of our budgetary transparency efforts. So, Superintendent.
Thank you very much. Much anticipated associated with the launch of Open Gov. A very powerful tool, outward-facing, allowing the community, parents, our own workforce, to achieve two things. Number one, gain ready access to very dynamic budgetary information, how we allocate resources and the level of spend. In addition to that, easily making the connections between the funds that are allocated, dollars allocated, and their connection to the strategic priorities adopted by the board. Open Gov in our district is being, is being named the Strategic Plan Budget Tracker. And it is my understanding that as we make this announcement today, it is going to go live. And we're going to disseminate its availability and access through social media sites, press release, et cetera, because we do want our workforce to be keenly aware of our financial position, our reserve level, where we're spending money, and the progress over time on utilization of those resources. So with that, I'd invite Saman to come to the mic for 30 seconds' worth of filling in the gap over what I didn't say.
Hello, I'm Saman Bravo-Karimi, Director of Finance Policy. So the Strategic Plan Budget Tracker is live today. Our wonderful communications team is making that, those announcements on multiple channels. And as a reminder, the, the financial information included is going to include all funds, so not just general fund, but all of our funds. It is at the priority level. So again, the hierarchy in the plan is pillar, priority, strategy. You'll see how funds and, and personnel are, are allocated between those priorities. And yeah, we, we're very excited to make it public finally and look forward to everyone familiarizing themselves with it and benefiting from it.
So if I'm sitting at home with my computer, how do I find this?
We'll be distributing the, the URL, the, the website link, the web address. It'll be available on social media as well as all, all of our, our, our media channels. And we'll make that available as well in an email to the, to all district employees.
Just want to add that it's actually already on our main page. It's one of the first things that you can click on.
That's what I was looking for.
Thank you.
Great. But thank you for asking, Ms. Goldberg. We will disseminate this widely once it's, it's live. So thank you for that update, just as a follow-up to our earlier budgetary presentation. So thank you. Superintendent, with that, our final presentation is an update, a progress update on the Smarter Balanced Assessment and the National Assessment of Educational Progress. We have a brief introduction from Dr. Estrada, and then Dr. Baez and Mr. Johnson will be presenting.
Thank you, Chairperson Melboine, President Goldberg, Board Vice President Scherholson, and members of the board. The presentation we're about to provide is one, a brief overview of the data that was previously shared with you in the fall. We'll be summarizing the results from the Smarter Balanced Assessment, or SBAK, the National Assessment for Educational Progress, or NAEP, and the English Language Proficiency Assessment for California, or LPAC. Secondly, we will be also sharing with you the research practices, promising practices that we have learned from, as well as those that we are currently implementing to ensure that we're increasing student outcomes across the district. As outlined in our strategic plan, the focus on consistent implementation of high-quality instruction to improve student outcomes is our commitment to our students and families. Executive Director of the Office of Data and Accountability, William Johnston, and our Chief Academic Officer, Francis Baez, will provide additional details and answer any questions you may have. Just wanted to make sure to give that additional context.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Estrada, and we'll turn it over to the team for the presentation.
... slides to come up? Good, good morning, board members and Superintendent Carvallo. I am William Johnston, the Executive Director of the Office of Data and Accountability. Today, I will present an overview of results from some of the key state and national assessments that were conducted in the 2122 school year. And as Dr. Estrada mentioned, these, most of this information was already provided to you in the fall and in different format. Before diving into the data, I would like to highlight that the state assessment results are an essential component of the four district goals that are outlined in our district's strategic plan. Specifically for literacy and numeracy, which are the second and third goals on this slide, we measure progress using results from the Smarter Balanced Assessment, or SBA. I will now begin by briefly summarizing those Smarter Balanced results for the 2122 school year. In English Language Arts, when looking at all tested students in grades three through eight and grade 11, the average distance from standard declined 7.2 points compared to pre-pandemic levels in 2018-19. And distance from standard, as a reminder, measures how far above or below students on average are, are scoring relative to the cut point for the state's Level III or standard met threshold. And so a, a negative distance from standard means that, on average, students are performing below that, that cut point in their respective grades. When looking at all grades specifically, we see that the average DFS or distance from standard declined in every grade level except for grade eight. Of note, for third graders, which is the, the specific grade level that's targeted in the, the literacy district goal in the strategic plan, we see that the average distance from standard went down from negative 18.7 points to, below standard, to negative 32.8. And then of the, of all the different student groups mentioned, in the, in the, in the state that they track, we saw only an increase in one of those student subgroups as well.
And which group was that? Is that listed here?
Asian-American students.
Sit it on here. Thank you.
In math, we saw that the distance from standard for all tested students declined 17.3 points compared to the 2018-9 school year, from negative 50.6 to, to negative 60.9. Again, that's, you know, points below the standard threshold. The average DFS decreased in every grade level that was tested, including the, the pooled third through fifth grade span and the pooled sixth through eighth grade spans that are, that are what we track as groups for the district goal number three in numeracy. So for third through fifth graders, it went from negative 30.2 to negative 44.3. In grade six, the rate it went from negative 64 to negative 81.3. And every student subgroup across ethnicity groups and targeted student populations also experienced a decline since pre-pandemic levels. And then moving on quickly to the National Assessment of Education Progress, or NAEP, which has been, has seen a lot of press coverage for Los Angeles in the past year. As, as we know, NAEP is a nationwide assessment system for reading and math. It is administered biannually to a representative sample of grades four, eight, and 12, although this past cycle in 2022, it was just fourth and eighth graders. And as has been covered extensively in the media, we saw a nine-point increase in student performance in eighth-grade reading compared to 2019. And Los Angeles was the only large urban district to experience such an increase in that time span. And while we did see a four-point decline in math for grade four, this was a smaller decline than most of the other urban districts that are tracked by, by the NAEP consortium. Grades fourth reading and grade four math, I sort of mentioned them last because there were, there was no statistically significant change since 2019. And this is notable because Los Angeles was one of the only four large urban districts with no notable decline in fourth-grade math. So while, while this was a rather, you know, net neutral, it was seen as, you know, better than many of the other comparison districts that NAEP tracks. Despite this promising news, it is important to remember that all overall achievement, that, that overall achievement remains low, with 28% of eighth graders achieving proficiency in reading and 17% in math. So, so their work remains. And on this slide, we provide a summary of the various student groups that had statistically significant changes since the 2019 NAEP administration. Other groups did see changes, but they did not, they weren't considered statistically significant. Again, all eighth grade, you know, eighth-grade reading there in the bottom left stands out in a positive way as we see not only an uptick in performance for all students, as I already mentioned, but significant gains when looking at specific student demographic subgroups as well. And my apologies, I just want to point out a, a data error that did sneak in here for white students. It wasn't an 18-point increase, it was 12. So my apologies for that.
Where, where is that?
Bottom-left cell there for white students. It was not an 18-point increase, it was 12.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Help me also, while I, while I have you. And I say this in general, when you have acronyms, can you spell them out one time? What does FRPL mean? I think I know what it means, but...
Free and Reduced Price Lunch.
Price lunch, that's what I thought, okay. Price Lunch, that's what I thought, okay.
Yep, sorry about that.
Okay.
Did I push a button there? Did we go... My apologies. Okay, so, and finally, I'd like to briefly summarize the results of the English Language Proficiency Assessment for California, or the LPAC. LPAC is the Required State Test for English Language Proficiency given to students whose primary language is a language other than English. The summative LPAC, which is at the top of the slide, is used to assess the progress of EL students, English learners, in acquiring the skills of listening, reading, writing in English, and it's used to determine students' exit or reclassification out of our English Language Learner Support System. In 2022, the percentage of students scoring at Performance Level IV, or Well-Developed, increased by 3.31 percentage points from the prior year. So that put us at a 14.6%. And reaching, I should point out, reaching Level IV is notable because this is the criterion that the state sets for reclassification, to become a reclassified English learner student, which is another, you know, classification we use. So when compared to other large districts across the state, LA Unified had the largest percentage of students scoring at this Performance Level IV, and that's in comparison to other large districts such as Santa Ana, Oakland, San Bernardino, Stockton, and Fresno. And then finally, we present some results of the initial LPAC, which is sort of a one-time test upon entry for students into the district. It's mostly administered to students in kindergarten, unless they, of course, transfer in at a later time. Of the over 20, you know, of the almost 30,000 students that were assessed, 89% of them were reclassified as English learners. And so then, and now I will actually, I will turn it to our Chief Academic Officer Frances Baez to discuss some of the promising practices and areas of emphasis in our instructional supports.
Thank you.
Sure.
All right, greetings, LAUSD Board of Education, Superintendent Carvalho. Just to build upon Mr. Johnston's presentation on the data, I do want to explain some of the strategies that were taking place across the district. So I looked at the data and looked at schools that had a 30-point increase on the Smarter Balanced Assessment, and looked at the practices that were taking place. So in the degree and the frequency in which these practices were taking place, there were a connection to the increase in achievement of our students. So the following, our research-based instructional practices that occurred in pockets of our district where there were increases, and these are the things that we want to scale up across the district. So I want to begin first with effective practices in language arts, beginning with engaging students in listening, speaking, reading, and writing based on the standards. So when students have an opportunity to speak, read, and write, and listen throughout the day on a daily basis, we give an opportunity for them to express their learning, to build upon their knowledge, to have constructive conversations, which also supports our English learners in reaching English language development targets. Our early literacy initiatives such as Primary Promise, Professional Development, and Structured Reading, and Strategies to Address Students with Dyslexia were some of the things that we did that contributed to the increase in achievement. In terms of writing, when we offer our students multiple opportunities to write and defend an argument, using multiple sources across all subjects was a very important key skill that students need to have. When students do this every day, when they write and defend an argument based on evidence, it is also assessed on the Smarter Balanced Assessment, it's assessed in the English Language Proficiency Assessment for California, and the California Science Test. So it's a critical skill that students need to have, and that it's assessed on all of these assessments. Another strategy that we saw is that when teachers spend time carefully planning lessons to provide students multiple ways to learn the content and multiple ways to represent their learning, again, there was increases in achievement. We call this the Universal Design for Learning. And this supports our students with disabilities, it supports our English learners, it supports our standard English learners, our gifted students, our international students, our African-American students, I can go on and on. A universal design means that there's multiple ways for every single student to reach and have access to the learning. Another strategy was schools and classrooms where they saw themselves in the learning, where they saw curriculum, where they saw materials and books that looked like them, where students had ownership in the learning. Students who experienced culturally relevant and linguistically sustaining experiences were connected to the learning. So here are some acronyms. IELD stands for Integrated English Language Development. That means that teachers are using the strategies throughout the day, not just during the designated time, but throughout the day for our English learners to access the content. The Academic English Mastery Program was critical for our standard English learners and our universal design for learning. To build upon these strategies, schools and classrooms will offer students culturally and linguistically relevant and sustaining learning signals that they can maintain their cultural identity and build upon their cultural capital. This validates and affirms them. That's what the Academic English Language Mastery Program does. It's a bridge between the home language and the academic language for our standard English learners. Students were presented with multiple ways to learn and represented their learning. When students, when teachers had an opportunity to analyze and act upon assessment data to guide instructional planning, they personalized the learning. This was a key piece here. This allowed for small-group and individualized instruction to reteach or introduce topics to accelerate the learning. For example, in the Black Student Achievement Plan, this calls for a five-week cycle where the teachers analyze the data. So once again, where we saw this in the pockets throughout the district, when we saw these strategies taking place consistently on a daily basis, we saw increases. Our goal is to scale this up throughout our district. That's the intention of the strategic plan and the intention of us reaching coherence. Now I'm going to transition to the area of math. Again, the degree and frequency in which these strategies take place really affects assessment data. We saw minimal growth in math, but in schools where there were increases, the following research-based practices took place. Students were involved in real-world problem application. Teachers facilitated student discussion and allowed the students to defend their solution to a real-world problem. Students critiqued each other's work and solutions, and they pushed each other. So what this means is, if you can recall a time when you've been to a robotics competition or your last STEMS classroom visit where students had to defend their solution path or why they programmed their robot a certain way, that is part of what we need our students to do. They need to defend their solution path, they need to defend their argument. So if you've gone to a STEM classroom, you've gone to a robotics competition, you've seen this in real life. Another piece here is balancing conceptual procedure on real-world application. Procedural lessons are just as important, but what we're seeing across the system is that we have an over-reliance on procedural and conceptual and not enough balance on real-world application. This is what we need to fix. This is why you're seeing the outcomes that you're seeing. And our work ahead is in ensuring that there is real-world application every single day and that students have an opportunity to solve problems and to defend their solution Teachers share content in a variety of ways, and so this is another way that we introduced Universal Design for Learning, where they have an opportunity to share, to learn the content in multiple ways and represent it in multiple ways. So this could be where a teacher provides a real-world problem and students have a solution path that is unique to their own and they critique each other's learning. Again, when teachers analyze and act upon assessment data, this will guide instructional planning and personalized learning. This is a key piece here. So when our schools have an opportunity to embed data analysis throughout the school year for teachers to sit together and look at the data and plan personalized learning, this is when increases occurred. And students experiencing their culturally and linguistically relevant learning, again, students don't see themselves as mathematicians. We want to make sure that every student in our system sees themselves as a mathematician, that you at the Board of Education see yourself as a mathematician. And that's what we're trying to do as well with our regional leadership, is ensuring that they're not afraid of math and looking at math tasks, really dissecting what standards are asking us to do, and pushing our thinking so that we ensure that we're giving students that access. So having said that, these are our next steps. As we emphasize that frequency and degree of implementation is what makes the difference, there's urgency with ensuring that all students have access to the practices. So now I'm going to share some of the steps that we've already taken. Planning professional development for all teachers and administrators. As was mentioned earlier, there was high participation in the voluntary buyback days. And yes, we do plan to have additional buyback days this upcoming year. It began with professional development and inclusive practices. Last month, we formed a math tiger team, and this math tiger team consists of math content experts about parenting, community engagement, members of our Black Student Achievement Unit, from our EL team, and from our special education team. And we're working on providing professional development for all of our teachers in the summer. We're building on the knowledge of our regional leaders and calibrating their lens around effective math teaching practices based on the National Council of Teachers of Mathematics. We're also in the planning stages for summer professional development in English Language Arts and Science for teachers and administrators. In addition, we're partnering with our Parent and Community Engagement Unit to provide parents and caretakers that homeschool connection activity to reinforce the learning at home. There's a master plan institute that will also support the learning of our English learners, and we are providing professional development for teachers of students with And we continue to increase the rate of students participating in tutoring, and we've already exceeded our goal from December, and we're continuing to work hard to ensure that students have access to tutoring. We're in the planning process of our April Acceleration Day, and we're very excited about these theme opportunities that our students are going to have across the system. Looking forward, in order for us to go deeper, we really need a common assessment and aligning common curriculum to plan around the results. And this will be slowly phased in, but this is, again, another way for us to go deeper. We're designing enrichment experiences that provide students the background to participate in the content. For example, our Culture Arts Passport. This is a key initiative that Superintendent Carvalho has introduced to our system. This will allow all of our students to go to these exhibits, to participate in, to see artistic performances at outdoor spaces, so they can bring back that learning into the classroom experience. We've prioritized the neediest schools with additional supports by providing them additional professional development, staff, and resources. Through the English Learner Supports and Black Student Achievement Plan, we're providing teachers focused professional development. The BSAP work includes combining Spotify with math, including Carnegie Math, and ensuring the gradual release model so students have more opportunities for discussion. You've heard that as a pattern when I presented the math piece, the language arts piece. Students need an opportunity to discuss. Gradual release means that teachers are allowing the students to speak, that it's not just the teacher speaking the entire day. Now students get an opportunity to have that structured discussion around the topic that they're learning. Teachers who serve students with disabilities are also being offered professional development. Addressing the needs of our most historically marginalized students is one of the most important pieces that we need to have, and this is what we're doing with our priority schools. Lastly, it's our Individual Acceleration Plan, which will be introduced shortly. It's to allow our parents and everyone in the system to know that there's a student who needs support and to prescribe the supports that they're needed. So parent can easily just click a button and know, this is what my child needs. If they're not reading at grade level, then we need to quickly get them to tutoring. We need to quickly get them to acceleration day. We need to quickly give them intervention after-school and on Saturdays, so that everyone in the system is alerted about the needs of our students. So as you can see, we have analyzed the data. We know there's a long way to go in math. There's pockets of success throughout the district. There's initiatives that we are already rolling out so that all of our students achieve. You've heard the patterns in what I said. We need to discuss, we need to write, we need to read. If we don't do this throughout the day, our students are not going to achieve. Thank you very much for your attention, and that concludes our presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Baez, Ms. Johnston, and Dr. Estrada. So we'll see Mr. Schmelz in his hands, so we'll start there.
So that was wonderful, thank you, Frances. Common assessments are so important, even at school, even at the school site. I remember that we would have departments meet together for a department meeting, and they would come together to give a common assessment, give it to all the kids in the department, and then look at the results. And it was amazing when teachers saw the results of what kids got and what kids didn't get, and it was a very helpful teaching tool, just to kind of regulate yourself to see what's going on in the classrooms. And it was done by the teachers themselves, and they saw the results themselves. So I just love common assessments. Once in a while, not all the, once in a while, a common assessment.
Thank you, Board members.
Sure.
Appreciate that.
Thank you. Dr. Rubus?
I wasn't ready, but I...
Oh, we can go back, we can go back.
No, no. So you mentioned in effective practices in language arts, you spang so quickly, I didn't get them all. You said Primary Promise, what were the other ones?
Primary Promise and also Professional Development on Dyslexia.
On Dyslexia, that's right.
And there's also Professional Development in middle school and in high school. Read1Mady, for example, is one of the strategies that are used to try to support in closing the achievement gap.
And you also mentioned you want to scale this up, you know, everything, all the effective practices. So the small-group instruction, what supports are you providing that? Because, you know, we're short-staffed, so how...
So in schools that provided that small-group instruction, for example, you have your tier-one support. Teacher delivers a lesson, teacher then works with a small group, while the others work either independently or work with a teacher's assistant or an additional support staff. That's an example of small-group instruction. It can also be where students are mixing throughout the day in different classrooms, and they're mixing by ability levels, again, to decrease the class, the size of students that are working with the teacher. That's just one example of small-group instruction.
Like academies, are academies still being...
Academies, students going to another teacher. So we provide the tier-one, tier-two, and tier-three. And there's schools that come to mind who do this very well throughout the day.
How about our TAs? Because our TAs are such hard to come upon and hiring them, sometimes it takes a long time. And that's, if anything, from my experience in the classroom and observing and being a volunteer and all of that, they're a great resource, you know, our TAs. But, you know, it's really hard to, you know, acquire them. Do we have any pathways or any programs where we can get that?
Sure, there's been a lot of recruitment, and I think HR, who has supported with that. And in the meantime, while we wait for the teacher's assistant, we also seek alternatives like instructional aids. So I thank the Personnel Commission who supports with that. And there are some pipelines, and we have the Per Educator Career Ladder, for example, and also tapping into our staff that works in Beyond the Bell after-school to provide them some pathways to become teacher's assistants. So the work continues, and we try to find alternatives, but we continue to seek out these teacher's assistants who are so very valuable in our schools.
Are we looking at how to address the requirements that, you know, that is needed for a TA, like they have to take a certain amount of courses? Are we looking into sort of alleviating some of that? I know...
Yeah, HR has provided some flexibilities, like maybe extending the deadline to submit your units from university. There's some more that we can get you, more information from HR. They will have exactly what flexibilities they've been providing.
Right. And in terms, you mentioned robotics and, you know, all of the real hands world problem, I mean, you know, solving world problems. But I want to know, how about resupplying our robotics teams, particularly when they get into these regional competitions, but we don't have any buses to take them there? You know, that doesn't make any sense. We want them to do that, but then when it comes to really representing, they're, you know, they don't have any funds for that.
Well, they really should reach out, because I know as a local district superintendent, we definitely sponsored our students to go to statewide competitions and national competitions. I'm pretty sure our regional superintendents will make sure they get there.
Because I have my schools at Franklin High School that really are in need, and I'm going to be taking me up on that offer.
I supported them last year too, so I'm sure they'll be supported again.
Awesome. And just overall, you know, be one, a lot of our students don't have the ability, you know, for a lot of reasons, socioeconomic status, like myself, to get out of our neighborhood, right? And field trips were the best, I remember as a kid. I love field trips. I still remember the field trips to Natural History Museum, just seeing that, you know, the buffaloes and, you know, all that in real life. For me, I remember that, and that's really etched in. So I would love to see some way, somehow, for the district to support our schools and buses. I know that that's a high need, and we, as board members, we don't have enough funds to provide all of those buses. But I have schools that are invited to Walt Disney, you know, Music Hall to see symphonies and all of these wonderful opportunities that our students are going to miss out if we are not investing in this. If we're talking about enrichment, if we're talking about bringing, being ready for the world and making sure that our students have those experiences, field trips is what we need and establishing partnerships so our schools don't have to use their own budget out of that. So I would love to see more partnerships and field trips and money for buses and just, you know, making life real for our students in doing those field trips.
Well, I'd like to tell you that Superintendent Carvalho has a big vision, and he is going to be unveiling a very special project, is the Culture Arts Passport. It's called the Week of Wonder, February 6th and beyond, and you'll find that all of the students are going to be attending field trips to music, artistic performances, outdoor, and many other... artistic performances, outdoor, and many other, you just said the culture, you said the, there was a museum that you went to. So that-
The Natural History Museum.
The Natural History Museum. That's where students will be attending as well, and that's where our priority schools scaling up to eventually all of our schools to go. Not just locally, but statewide and nationally, even globally. So we're looking forward to meeting that vision, because it's going to really open doors for a lot of our students.
And I'm looking forward to that, too. Just one last part. All of these effective practices are great, and we want our teach, and I love that our teachers are really working together, but I know that our administrators want to be there for our teachers and be those instructional leaders that they can. So what are we doing to alleviate the workload, the administrative work? So our principals are there, providing that support. And from, you know, working in the district for as long as I have, that's what I hear all the time. We are just bombarded with this, and I don't have enough time to really, and I feel like a lot of our teachers are left to fend for themselves. Not because, you know, the principal's not there, it's just, you know, circumstances. So I really would love to see more, to alleviate the workload of our principals, so they can be those instructions, so it can really be, and I'm sure you are focusing on that, but from what I've gathered and what I've known for a long time, that's also, that's been a big issue.
Well, we haven't arrived to that destination, right? So Dr. Rubus, I really appreciate you saying that. We're going to look into ways that we can definitely remove things off their plate so that they can be there to support teachers. Thank you.
I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rubus. Dr. McKenna?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I have written about this and studied this for many years. I would like to offer something. I'm going to have to, I probably have to put this in writing. I put it in writing before, and some people just ignore it. I'm not an expert on anything, but I am experienced. First question, who will be doing the professional development? And how frequently?
The professional development will be with our content coordinators, but also in collaboration with our teachers. So our tiger team, which consists of content coordinators, will be collaborating with our math teachers to deliver this professional development.
The teachers that are already at the school?
It will be by region, and so it will, we will be accepting a registration process, and teachers will be invited to a particular site to have this professional development. We would already selected some teachers that have had success in teaching math. We'll collaborate with our content coordinators to deliver the professional development. The frequency, it's, we're launching it in the summer, and we will continue to have that throughout the year.
Throughout the year? That's not specific, sir. What, how frequently during the year?
Well, we really should be having it either weekly or monthly, because these are topics that we really need to continue to peel the onion until we get, until we get it right, the right formula for teaching instruction.
Weekly or monthly?
And the reason for that is because we have to balance that with language arts and science. So want to make sure that we are also able to provide that professional development.
I got that. Collegial visitations, where teachers visit teachers. We will have to identify effective classrooms, wherever they are in this district. I won't call them master classes, but they do. The teacher in that classroom has mastered how to teach. Teaching, for me, is an art and a science. The science is your subject area. You know your subject area. Can you teach it? That's where the art comes in, the flexibility, the creativity, the imagination of how you impress these students. And collegial study sessions are also essential for faculty members in elementary and secondary schools to get together, either at grade level or subject area level, and discuss what they're teaching. I'm saying this for the world, because maybe you already know this. I'm assuming you do. When I was taught about it years ago, and I've been better than, there are three areas that are important in professional development and collegial conversations. First, what are we trying to teach in the next two weeks? Number two, what methodology are we going to use for teaching it? Lecture, guided group practice, cooperative learning, whatever? And third, what are we doing differently for the students who are not getting it? Inside of that question is, do you know the ones that are not getting it? And what are you going to do differently? And if you can't raise your hand, then we need to call for the specialists from someplace else, maybe outside of the building. I'm talking about at school site levels. What are you doing to make sure no student is falling behind? If they came into you behind, what are you doing to catch up? That's not easy to do. And the older they are, the harder it is. Teaching a second grader to read is a lot easier, not easy even, but easier than teaching a seventh grader who still can't read, to read. I have identified, in addition to your speaking, listening, speaking, reading, and writing skills, I have three other skills, what I call thinking, studying, and test-taking. They can be taught. Everybody doesn't know how to teach them. And thinking is not just pondering. It is solving problems, even without numerical necessity. How to solve a problem, by thinking your way through it. Geometry is a subject in math that doesn't require very much numerical calculation. That's where algebra came in. Arithmetic is a calculation. And I'm surprised and shocked at the number of students that still don't have the rote memory necessary for mathematics. There's some things in mathematics that you can't contemplate. You have to memorize them, like the alphabet. Why does A come before C? Why does C come before Q? Because we memorize it that way. And once you memorize it, you can't unlearn it, because it's not going to come at you differently. In mathematics, the most critical skill of all is being able to multiply, not by writing it down on a piece of paper. If you don't know what seven times six is, and you haven't memorized it, you're handicapped for the rest of your life. It has to come to you automatically. What's seven times six? It's the same as six times seven. Do you know what it is, though? And for students that can't do that automatically, they can't do long division, they can't do fractions, they still don't know what to do. And so some of this has to be memorized. But the thinking process is utilizing the concepts of mathematics to solve problems that involve no numerical calculation at all. You can use the Sudoku puzzles in the newspaper, and people say, "I don't know anything about numbers." That puzzle solving has nothing to do with numbers. It has to do with matching symbols. They just happen to look like numbers. And where you put them, and you don't duplicate them, and you have the smaller ones and the larger ones, using that is a way to get them stimulated into things. Field trips is a wonderful example of expanding students. I had a challenge when I was running for office. Until I got this position, I had never had to run for office. I presented myself to the classified people, and they had a meeting, they were interviewing the candidates. And I talked with bus drivers, and I talked about what I had been doing to get the kids off the bus and get them back to my high school. And I did, more than anybody had ever done. And since then, I think, I was doing the PWT program. The bus drivers took me to task and said, "Well, those are our jobs. If we can't bus the kids to the valley, we lose jobs." I said, "You know, I never thought about that. But my priority wasn't employing you. But I can say this, we can expand the need for field trips, and you can be available every day. The buses can roll every day to some field trip somewhere. But you taking the kids to the valley was just another way to have people in the valley, no disrespect to them, not having to drive to the inner city, in broad daylight or at night, coming and going." And so I took a lot of kids from the valley. I had made enemies down at 450 North Grand, we weren't at Bowser then. But that wasn't my mission, to make friends. My mission was to rescue these children from being sent to a place for ADA purposes and employment comfort, but there was no acceleration of learning. And I found that out every summer when they'd come back to the high school, and they'd be misprogrammed all over the place. We had to spend, that was embarrassing. I even showed that to one of my superintendents. And I won't go into all of that, but they weren't happy to hear that. But I wasn't happy to see it, because I knew what would happen. This notion of, you know, the kids became like fodder in the need for moving students to another part of the unified school district that wanted to keep them for ADA purposes, but didn't want them to be around, and especially the athletes. They needed them out there, but in the classrooms. We had students complaining about it now. Two, and sometimes three PE classes, not one physics class in that, in that schedule. And they took those classes trusting that this was going to help them graduate. They were so naive that they were easily exploited. And the parents that sent them out there were so hopeful that they didn't challenge it at all, because they were just glad not to be in this school. They had to be convinced to come home where they could walk to school, instead of riding for an hour and a half on a bus to a more promised land, which was false promise. So I have strong feelings about that. I think that you are into the most important part of a district, the instructional piece. And how do students measure, how do we measure student achievement? And I'm okay with people talking about mental health and wellness and self-esteem and self-image. That's all wonderful. You can have a great self-image and still not be able to multiply. You can be a gangbanger, have a great self-image, and still be a dangerous person to yourself and to others. Gangbangers know, I may not know this stuff, but you're scared of me, aren't you? So if I tell you to do something, you're going to do it, because I don't ask you, I tell you. I intimidate you. Bullying is my mantra. And so they're not learning. So you can teach them compassion, but can you teach them the multiplication table and how to use that, et cetera, et cetera? So without instruction and without professional development, and sadly, to say, and I'm always supporting teachers, how can you tolerate students not learning in your class? And I've seen some exercises now and saying, "Well, we don't need to do standardized testing. It's too much testing, too much testing." How do you assess where they are if you don't test them? But the way, the way it's couched in a political terms, if we test them standardized testing, it reveals what the objective outcome is, as opposed to the grade they're getting in the classroom by the teacher. Parent wrote an article, and somebody put it in the LA Times. The parent didn't write it, but the writer did. Maybe she did, I can't remember. And she was so dissatisfied with her child's progress on standardized tests, she hired a tutor. And she says she called her a Florida tutor, but when she saw his standardized test scores compared to what he was getting in the classroom, high grades, Bs and As, taking the standardized test, he wasn't even proficient. A son that she loves dearly, but she couldn't help him, so somebody else had to help him. But she was counting on the teachers, but he was just, he was just traversing through, having birthdays, and passing his way through school. And now we're even talking about, let's not test them to get them into the university. We don't, it's discriminatory. We can't get enough minority kids. Now, what's a minority nowadays? And so you tell them they can get into the university, the UC system, the Cal State system, without the entrance exam? No, we'll just teach them when they get here. And yet, aren't we supposed to do that in K-12, so they don't need to be remediated in the freshman year? So what's our coordination and liaison with them? I had a conversation in public in a place I won't even mention, and the head and then of the Cal State system said, "Well, we're not going to give freshmen math anymore. We're not going to give remediation classes. We're just going to give them a class and tutor them." I said, "And you think that's going to learn? How many tutors do you have? And how many students come unprepared?" What they're trying to do, unfortunately, is get enough, shall we say, children of color into the system, so they can get federal grants. Look how we improved the number of black kids that came into the university. But are they going to be able to matriculate through? I don't think the university professors are going to be encouraged to pass them through. That's not your problem. Your problem, and you chose this, this mission possible, if you get captured, we're going to still come to get you. But it's a tough thing that you signed on to do. Superintendent tapped you and said, "Come do this." Said yes. And so did Carla. And so did everybody else who's trying to help us help these children. But we can't do it unless the teachers participate. And it befalls me and disappoints me when we give these opportunities for student enrichment, and some of our beloved teachers say, "No, not me. I'm not in there. I'm not in there." I'm going to put my thing in writing again and distribute it to a lot of people, because everybody hasn't seen it. I tried to put it in as a resolution. Some people said, "No, that's too detailed. If I don't put the details in, how would I expect people who never saw it to know what the details are? They just do what they've been doing." These are great concepts. The details are where the danger is. Can they really get to all of this? I hope we can. I expect we can. I believe in superintendent's experience, and if we have trust in his leadership to get us to look the devil in the eye. He's already done that, because he's identified 100 underperforming schools. He's looked them in the eye and said, "Your school is underperforming. What are you going to do about that? Do I need a new principal? Do you need a different staff? What do you need? Do you need more training? What do you need? The word principal means principal teacher." It goes all the way, my mother taught me that. She was a teacher. She said, "You know, the word principal means principal teacher." Some of the schools in the South didn't have a principal certified. They were just a teacher. The best teacher on staff was the principal in those smaller elementary school classrooms. I believe that this is well-intended. I want to be able to help to the extent that I can. Otherwise, it's not my ego talking. All the stuff that I know will be wasted. Why am I sitting here as a board member, reading and listening, understanding it? But I can't do anything, because I'm not staff. I've even suggested, maybe I need to get out of this and go back to being a staff member, where I worked in a school with staff people and give them direction and help them as a resource person. Board members are somewhat limited, and we should be limited. We should be limited to just making policy. But I can't, there is no policy. "If thou shall learn, and if thou doesn't, thou shall be gone, off with their heads." That's not a district policy. We have to help everyone, even the ones who are unwilling and unable. We have to make them a bit more compliant in terms of wanting to teach the children who are reluctant to learn, afraid to learn, they've gotten too old, they've been unlearning for so long and mislearning for so long, that they just believe they continue to be passed on. So we have the greatest responsibility in a place called America, in any society, educate the children. Finally, I've said this before, there's a treatise, it was in the 1920s, written by Carter G. Woodson, "The Miseducation of the Negro." People ought to read that, because he talked about what the public schools were all about and what they were not. But the Negro was to be educated for specific things, not to excel and become leaders, but to be able to be placed in some place that somebody else in power would assign to them. And this is your place. This will be your job, not your career, but your job. You will not be in charge of anything, if you argue you're the exception, but that wasn't the purpose. First was to teach some rudimentary skills, which was better than the days before that, when we were property and enslaved, and we couldn't even learn to read. To educate us was to face the penalty of death in the segregated South. So people migrated, coming to, final thing for me, I came to California, saying, "It'll be better out here." And I saw the same kind of separations, discriminations, well-intentioned people. A black child was not seen as the valedictorian. I've done a little homework on the number of valedictorians and the background, the ethnicity and gender of valedictorians in our high schools over the past 10, even 20 years. Unless it's an all predominantly black school, rarely do you get a black valedictorian. A lot of black kids have left those schools in search of a better school. Do they have to be the valedictorian? No. But I would like to see them with the cards around their neck, the honor cards around their neck. But if they didn't take any honor classes, that's not going to happen. We have some people who are trying. We have some people who are trying right now, even as we speak. Superintendents are beginning to learn who they are, trying to uplift this group of people. I have been doing it all my life.
Dr. McHale, speaking of that, I know, I think Dr. Estrada wants to chime in in a minute when you conclude, and then we'll have a few more questions.
Done, I'm done. I'm done.
Thank you.
I think it's also important to identify, based on this presentation, that you're right, we have to have a multi-prong approach. One is that our principals, our school leaders and our instructional leadership teams at the school sites, how do we support them? How do we make sure that we all understand a common way of practice that we want to see happening for all of our kids? And that definitely is part of our strategy, as you shared. Our superintendent has identified priority schools and identified resources to align to meeting that need. I think the other key piece to what our C O has shared today is not only the professional development, but the deeper work that happens after. And definitely being able to leverage some of those opportunities that we have, collaboration time has increased significantly in this school district. That's a wonderful opportunity for our teachers to be able to know, how can we share, what is working for us, what's not, and grounded in the data and evidence that we know works. And I think the last piece has to do with enrichment opportunities. I think our students recognize that they want to be able to learn beyond their classroom walls. I think our educators want to learn and create experiences for their kids outside the classroom walls. And therefore, we have to have a very clear strategy of how we ensure that not just certain kids, but all kids get access to those kinds of enrichment, learning experiences as robotics, as field trips, as the cultural arts, and the many other things that L A has to offer. So you're absolutely right. We need to look at this from a multi-prong approach. And so we continue to be able to engage, we look forward to being able to continue to engage the board on those strategies.
Thank you, Dr. Estrada. A few more questions, comments, and then for the members of the public, well, after this concludes in the next few minutes, we'll go to our public comments. So thanks for your patience, but obviously a fascinating discussion and response. Ms. Ortiz Franklin and then Ms. Goldberg.
Yes, thank you. Just a couple of quick ones from me. You mentioned some of the best strategies were from a list of 30 schools that you had observed. Did I hear that correctly?
It was that schools that increased by 30 points closer to standards.
Thank you. That's, that's what I was looking for. I'd love to see that list. And in particular, if we have that list for groups of students that closed opportunity gaps, we want to be learning from them and inviting them to various committees. So if you could share those lists with the board, I think we'd love to invite them. I definitely appreciate all the inputs and strategies, particularly on universal design for learning. The board passed a resolution, maybe almost two years ago at this point, on mastery of learning and grading. And I know a lot of folks are taking that up, but really thinking not just about the inputs, but also the outputs for students and the multiple opportunities there. To what extent is that factoring into the professional development?
Oh, yes. And now it's equity grading and instruction. And it's, it is rolling out now. And we're actually providing professional development to additional leaders throughout the regions so that we're building capacity within the region so that they can then engage in professional development at the school. So that's actually taking place now, in particular for our priority schools.
Perfect. And then last one for me, another resolution, which was more about FAFSA and CADA, got a plan for that, small piece that was embedded in there around the individual graduation plan and culmination plan. Just curious how that might match with the individual acceleration plan because we have all these ideas for plans, don't want to overwhelm students, schools or families, but do want to streamline these things.
So as the individual acceleration plan is being designed, there's multiple offices and divisions, including those that are developing or in the final processes of developing our individual graduation plans so that there is not duplication, that it's just one stop shop.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Goldberg.
Thank you very much. Couple of things. First, on Thursday at 4 o'clock, we will be looking at mathematics and particularly the cognitively guided instruction led by a former colleague of mine, Dr. Megan Frankie from UCLA. So I invite all of you because I think it is a promising idea and techniques and methodology of improving our mathematics instruction. I think that we need to separate the issue in terms of reading of those who are a fairly short distance from standard and those who are a great deal of a distance from standard. We used to call them far below basic. We treat kids who are behind in reading pretty much the same, whether they are a little ways from beating the standard or whether they are in another location far away. I think that has to change. I also think that if we can focus on, in reading, on grades four through eight, and we take a look at varying things like class size, the number of adults in the classroom, I think we need to be sure that we can find instructional aids that do not require them to go to college, to be in the classroom. A student who can read well, a young person who can read well can be a good instructional aide in a classroom, helping kids learning to read. When we were trying to work at Dominguez High School in Compton on this, we began adding classroom aids to our classrooms so that in a classroom in a 50-minute period might be all period long in a group of five or six students every day. That changed their outcomes. The other thing we needed to do was to vary the textbooks so that you had different readability in the same classroom. Because if you have students who are reading below fifth grade in the eighth grade, there isn't a single book all day long that they can read, which means they don't read all day long. They don't read at home, they don't read at school, and we should not be shocked that their reading doesn't improve. But we have one textbook or maybe a textbook with a little supplement that gives them a little help? No, they need a textbook that they actually can be close to reading. I think there are things that we can do that make a big difference, but we have to do them, a lot of them. In the same school, if a classroom has mostly kids who are low readers, that classroom should have a smaller class size than a classroom where everybody can read the textbook. In the same school, I'm not just talking about between schools. We have to alter the environment significantly if we're going to significantly raise reading achievement in those grades four to eight. Because if we don't do it in grades four to eight, they have dropped out, but they're not allowed to leave yet. And by ninth or 10th grade, they've actually got permission to leave. There isn't any alternative. We have to catch it sooner, but we have to be willing to do things very differently than we've done for the kids who are very far behind. And stop seeing them as sort of like the kids that are a little behind. Because the kids that are a little behind, I've been seeing make pretty good progress, not the ones that are far behind. Finally, I do hope we are, I know the Personnel Commission was looking at instructional aids. I hope we are going to be able to hire them in large numbers so that they can, in these grades four to eight, have three, maybe four adults in the classroom at the same time all day long. What does that do? That means that every kid gets some attention every period or all day long in elementary school. That changes the outcomes in reading. I'm sure it would in math as well. So I, I think that, that what we have done so far has been okay, but it has been too little for the kids that are struggling the most. Been pretty good for the kids who are almost there and we can give them a little push and find out where they're missing. That's the data dig. We find out what they got to do. We fill in those blanks and guess what? They, they get there. Doesn't help. Too little, too late for the kids who are really struggling in either reading or math. So those are the things I hope we will look at. I also want at some point for us to come back and take a look at high school students who are long-term ill. I do not believe they should be denied taking courses in other subjects like electives because that's language there, too. Elective class has language vocabulary, has language, all kinds of language in them, in their electives. And I do not think, and I would like to ask the superintendent to come back with some recommendation about that particular issue because I have a whole bunch of kids who would like to take some electives, who never get them because they're still at three. They can't quite make it to four. Okay. I don't think that should keep them out of classes that they'd like to take as an electives. If, if adding an additional hour of ESL, we're going to work, it would have worked by now. So that's not going to solve the problem anyway. So let's at least not hold them in difficulties in those situations. That's probably enough for one conversation.
And Jackie, those electives are motivators for kids to come to school and stay in school. That's why some kids come to school for those electives?
Exactly right. Exactly right. Thank you.
If I may, we would welcome the opportunity. The Med Office has definitely been looking at how to explore not just our LTAs, but also recent arrivals and how do we create different learning options for them. We've met with high school principals who've shared, as our students are recently arriving, I feel terrible that I can't give them more options because I know what the, the journey and path they have before them. So we welcome that opportunity.
Thank you all. Great questions and conversation. Yes, Dr. Rivas.
So sorry, I just remember there was some, I forgot to ask Mr. William Johnson, just a quick question. Is this your debut here in a board meeting? Is this your first board meeting?
Yes, it is. I've been in the position two months.
Two months. Welcome. Congratulations. So you mentioned the decline in, you know, the S P A C and the, what's the other one? The N A, NAEP. What do you attribute, you know, the, the decline in, in the S P A C and also the different, you know, the, the different results that both assessments are providing us?
Well, certainly, you know, attributing a direct causal link is very difficult in a complicated situation like this. But, you know, I think, I mean, we're coming out of a historic global pandemic and the, the disruption to learning, the disruption to families and, and regular life for, for children is, can't be, can't be ignored in all of this. And, and in particular, you know, what that does to the learning environment for kids who have acute, you know, needs to have specific accommodations or, or work supports in a learning environment. That being said, you know, I think there's a lot of evidence that the district here in Los Angeles and across the country, a lot of bold work is happening to, to, to deal with that and, and, and go from there. But, I mean, in my mind, I mean, first and foremost, it has to start with the, you know, thinking about what the pandemic did. But that's not to make an excuse and just walk away. That's, that's the, the beginning of the conversation about where to go from here.
It would be great next time just to provide a little bit more detail in terms of, we had as one student group showed increases, like which one and why, you know, just a little bit more detail so we understand what's behind the decline, even if it's just, you know, something. And I know that the next steps are connected to how to address these test scores. And then the last thing I just want to bring, I know that for the next steps, we have tutoring and acceleration days. I would like to see a disaggregated sort of analysis of who is actually using the tutoring by grade level and by region and by socioeconomic status and race, just to see who is really taking advantage of it and who still needs more help or, and also who are we, I know it's been, was mentioned earlier in other meetings, who is providing the tutoring? The, the organizations or the nonprofits or?
Thank you. We will do that.
And then the other thing, acceleration days, you know, if it's going to be here as a next step, and I don't want, I'm not a naysayer at all, and I understand the importance of the two days, but based on, you know, the glows and the grows and everything that needed to make sure that that's actually, that it's, it's going to be used for the benefit of, of our students and learning laws and all of that. I just would love to see a plan that is going to address what didn't work and how we're going to make it better and the metrics that we're going to use that links directly to the outcomes we want. So I just want it to be strengthened and better for, if we're going to use it as a next step. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rivas. And I think in the interest of time, I'll table some of my questions. I think, you know, appreciate the presentation, sharing the data publicly, drawing at least some of, if not causal, the correlated inferences on those effective practices. I mean, I think it is trying to understand why we saw an increase in NAEP but a decrease in S P A C. I mean, there are different tests, who are the populations, what's working is obviously going to be the whole project of the strategic plan implementation. I will, you know, echo a lot of what was said by my colleagues. I know we keep hearing is the answer to a lot of these things, the I A Ps, the Individualized Acceleration Plan. You alluded, Dr. Byas, to their coming. What is the timeline for that and what will, because I mean, it's, it's exciting. It's something that few of us mentioned early on in the pandemic, you know, an I A P for every student was kind of how I was talking about it, to help kids catch up. So it's promising, but just curious when this is actually going to come to fruition.
We'll be able to provide you more specific timelines. At this point, we're trying to leverage already what's in the system. That's the beauty of, of our district is we have a lot of data that's already available. We have some of the systems already designed to be able to create the I A P. We're trying to make a decision on what alerts will be triggered based on some of that data and then what are the solutions or interventions and enrichment opportunities that we want to make sure that then it automatically triggers for families to know, sign up for acceleration days or tutoring and so on. So we're in that process now. It is our hope in the next month to be able to share with you very specific details of a beta launch and then being able to go deeper into more areas that we'd like to ensure that the I A P offers. For example, we're looking at attendance, we're looking at some basic skills, we're calling it the ABCs. But we'd also love to see college and career readiness. So if you're a student who hasn't completed your FAFSA, for example, that it's not just based on academic grades, but all kinds of students where even enrichment opportunities can be really helpful. So we'll be outlining more of those details to come.
Thank you. And so the beta would be a, a presentation to the board on what this looks like? What's a realistic timeline for when like parents would, and students would get these I A Ps?
So we're, like I said, we're at that point where we're just making some final decisions. So in a month, we'll be able to come back and share with you specific timelines, including when the beta will be launched and so on. So we will definitely circle back.
Got it. And understanding this is a matter of first impression, is there hope that the parents might have this to be used as an actual actionable piece of feedback for this school year or are we?
Oh, absolutely. That's, yeah. That will definitely be part of our initial phase is to be able to launch something that then folks could give us feedback and say, how do we make this super easy for families to know immediately what do they need? That has been a different charge by our superintendent. Because we have lots of wonderful plans, so there are ways in which families can be informed already of practices that are working for their children, whether they're making certain standards of practice. But what we don't have is something that automatically very easily bubbles up, those few things that parents really should be keeping track of.
Thank you all. I mean, welcome. And great with that. Thank you all for getting us through and relatively good time our media agenda. And we're going to turn to public comments. So thank you to the, for the patience of our public speakers, both in the boardroom and virtually. I'll turn it over to Mr. McLean.
Thank you very much. We are now going to begin public comment. Lucy Garcia, are you on the line? Lucy Garcia, I see you're on the line. Press star six to unmute yourself and you'll have three minutes to speak once you begin. Ms. Lucy Garcia, I see you've unmuted yourself. And once you begin speaking, you'll have three minutes.
Hi. Good afternoon to all of you and thank you, everyone in this room, for your attention at, in this long meeting. I want to thank Jackie Goldberg and Scott Schmelz for their promotion of the Climate Literacy Resolution last year and for their thoughtful work on this board all these years. Welcome, welcome to Dr. Lucio Rivas, Chair of the Climate and Green Schools Committee. Climate literacy needs to be a targeted academic effort as a real-world application path, real-world application path. Funding needs to be on the level of our efforts to train teachers on using computers in the classroom. Think Mises School of Future Ready Classroom. Climate literacy is at least that important. Let me introduce three shifts in thinking about it. First, there's a shift beyond climate-friendly facilities at schools. We need to teach kids about what we're doing and have them plan and discuss so that all our systems become climate-friendly. Second shift, teach climate beyond STEM. For decades, we were seeing that science was not convincing enough. Then what broke many people out of the dream that tech fixes will do it was the brutality towards the Dakota Access Water Protectors and Black Lives Matter movement. And then in 19, in 2020, in the midst of the COVID pandemic, people protested so courageously, not just the police murder of George Floyd, but the horribly disproportionate COVID deaths in, and by POC communities, disproportionate air pollution, restricted choices about going to work, unhealthy housing options due to a racist history and system. We saw racist systems finally that create people vulnerable to crisis, and we know that there will be more climate crises. We also begin to see who we have in our classroom. These are people who despite it all will not give up, people with long, rich cultures of struggle. Meanwhile, big tech made money. Are these the solutions we want? So we know now that cultural shifts are needed. So that means all our humanities classes, humanities classes come into play. Can an 11th grade history class examine the impacts of New Deal redlining on, say, heat in their own neighborhoods and learn about the environmental justice work there? Can English classes think, read, speak and write about how we receive climate migrants? Can the art classes imagine the world that our hearts need? The third shift is to see that The third shift is to see that green schoolyards, memorable field trips, school gardens, fresh food can connect kids explicitly to how nature is our ally in healing the climate crisis. Now, our committee has connected the District of State, National and philanthropically funded efforts by academic organizations and nonprofits to advance teacher readiness on climate. Monthly PD and collegial conversations will be needed. This will need funding and help to meet our giant district. Mr. Dahi and Ms. Dala Desordella have created four very popular professional development classes for our 245 climate champions, but they need staff because we need 700 more climate champions.
Thank you very much for your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Charlie Willen, I see you're on the line and that you've called in using the proper protocols. Charlie Willen, if you're on the line, press star six to unmute yourself and you have three minutes to speak once you begin. Charlie Willen.
Can you hear me?
We sure can. You have three minutes.
My name is Charlie Wilken and I'm a retired LAUSD teacher that is concerned with the health of our LAUSD infrastructure and meeting the needs of our LAUSD students. Today is almost the anniversary of the day the board passed a climate literacy resolution. The LA Climate Reality Project and LAUSD are trying to implement more climate literacy curriculum at every grade level and in every subject. I'm happy to say that LAUSD now has 245 climate champions who are being trained now to do this type of work at their sites. Unfortunately, the district has failed to find one person at every school to do the work and lacks 750 more representatives that could be doing this work. If LAUSD had the infrastructure to manage these efforts, the budget to match, this would not be a problem. The board should identify climate literacy as a targeted academic effort and give it a budget that would allow paying to manage, train and compensate those involved. The district needs to work harder with our schools to prepare and to teach about the effects of climate change in LA communities and the world. How can students and their families be part of the future solutions to these problems if climate literacy curriculum is not available to them? The good news is that there is more funding than ever to help solve these problems. The bad news is the district is having a hard time hiring people for key positions. Out of the classroom infrastructure, positions are critical to the bigger roles, goals of the district and they need to be supported to a greater degree than they are. It's time to develop an office of climate resiliency or an office of sustainability to manage all of these efforts. We need dedicated staff to focus on these efforts throughout the district. It's time to move past giving existing employees more jobs to do so that new positions don't have to be created. We need a vibrant new infrastructure that interfaces on a regular basis with the community greening organizations that want to help transform LAUSD. LAUSD needs to build new strong relationships with ten strands, green schoolyards, living schoolyards, resource conservation districts, CWP, Department of Sanitation, Department of Parks and Rec, Tree People, Sierra Club, Autobahn, energy activists and many other environmental justice groups that could be better integrated with LAUSD's student curriculum. The Los Angeles environmental community has a wealth of knowledge that could be leveraged if LAUSD builds the proper infrastructure and builds these relationships.
Thank you very much for your time. Thank you. Okay, Denise Beck, I see you're on the line. Denise Beck, please press star six to unmute yourself and you have three minutes to speak once you begin. Denise Beck.
Good afternoon. My name is Denise Beck and I'm the parent of a graduating fifth grader and a third grader attending Baldwin Hills Gifted and High Ability Magnet and Pilot Elementary School. From listening today, it seems as though you are all a group passionate about progress for all students, equality and not delaying in doing the things that need to be done to advocate for our kids and give them the best possible education. So I hope I meet you with an open ear and an open heart, ready to respond and help our children because you have the power to resolve this matter quite easily. So I'm going to start by reading a quote I'm sure you're all familiar with that can be found at achieve.lausd.net. And I quote, "It is time for us to intensify the focus on what is most important to our students and those who support them every single day to inspire a theory of action that turns impossible into the inevitable for everyone in the Los Angeles Unified Family." End quote, Superintendent Alberto M. Carvalho. Distinguished board members, now is the time for you to intensify your focus on Baldwin Hills Elementary for what is most important to the students, an enriched, robust and fair education and for those who support them every single day, the parents, the teachers and the community, to inspire a theory of action that turns the impossible, protecting Baldwin children from forced co-location with a charter school to the inevitable, reclaiming valuable space for music, robotics, science, counseling and community services that LAUSD's oppressive interpretation of Proposition 39 has confiscated. With the district and specifically our renowned board member, Dr. George McKenna, remaining silent and unmoved by our continued petition, do not worry, we have found a place to amplify this negligence. Recently, in the LA Times, the LA News, the LA Daily News, ABC 7 News and most effectively in a well-attended virtual community meeting, we hosted for elected officials, community organizations and activists for civil and racial justice. We urge you, by the precedent set forth by Superintendent Carvallo and posted on the cover page of the LAUSD website, to take every action to remedy the discriminatory and demoralizing effects of the co-location on Baldwin Hills Elementary's campus now and in the future. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Dr. Irving, I see you're here in person. Dr. Irving, come on up and you'll have three minutes to speak once you begin. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Dr. Amber Marie Irving and I am a proud parent of a second grader at Baldwin Hills Pilot Elementary and Community School and Gifted High Ability Magnet. Two of my older children attended Baldwin and were in the gifted magnet. My 19-year-old daughter, who's now a junior studying computer science at UC Irvine, and my son, who's a seventh grader at Palms Middle School Gifted Magnet. Baldwin is now the victim of a co-located charter eating away at our school called New LA. Our school has one of the most phenomenal programs in the district. We are not only pioneering pilot school, we're also pioneering culturally responsive learning, top-notch STEAM learning, creating our own curriculum, providing phenomenal in-school enrichment. We are a gifted high ability magnet and we are an official community school and we take our role in our students' lives seriously. We are making a difference and we're changing their lives. We are a bright shining star in the middle of a sometimes dismal landscape. The school-to-prison pipeline is a very real phenomenon and very obvious in the LAUSD, unfortunately. Here, you have a renowned elementary school. We're educating students to a degree unlike any other school, as observed by UCLA researcher Dr. Travis Dumas. They're learning about their culture and the culture of others. They're taking yoga, they're learning to be mindful, intentional, and they're learning to be proud of themselves and their heritage. We are raising world citizens and world leaders. There's no school like Baldwin Elementary in the LAUSD. Yet we've been cut off at the knees as rooms are stripped away and handed to New LA Charter. When you gave away our classrooms, you gave away the very rooms where we allow our scholars to strive and soar. The classrooms where we do art, play chess, do robotics, make music. You even gave away our computer lab, deeming them all as extra space. Do you know what? No majority Caucasian gifted magnet is co-located. There is no way a computer lab would be taken away from a gifted magnet servicing predominantly white students. Actually, no other gifted magnet in the entirety of the LAUSD is co-located. So why is ours? We can't help but feel discriminated against. We are now a community school. According to the community schools initiative, we're supposed to be a safe landing place for our children, families and community. How can we do so when our community school director doesn't even have her own office? Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Alondria Jones, Alondria Jones, I see you're signed up, but I don't have you on the live screen in front of me. So we're going to
Time to meet, if it's okay, with the board.
It's up to the chair. Yeah, go for it. We're going to set the timer.
Thank you. Our community school director doesn't even have a place to store all the extra school supplies, clothes, food and any other necessities and resources vital to our students and families. As a board, you can choose to deny New LA Charter space at Baldwin simply based on the two facts that we are, one, a gifted high ability magnet and, two, an official community school. Not to mention the fact that we are a high-scoring pilot elementary school with numbers unsurpassed by few schools in the district. Please offer New LA a space elsewhere. Our children don't deserve this. Brother McKenna, there was a time when this fight would have been right up your alley. You once fought valiantly for the underdogs. You fought for your black and brown constituents. You fought for us. Now it's hard for us to even get a hold of you. We often don't see you at these meetings and have attempted contacting you at your office to no avail. I hope that your health has been well, but for us down here in the trenches, we need you. We need you to step up and be here for our children. We're not talking about some underperforming school that needs help with programming. Baldwin is doing it right. We're doing right by our children, we're doing right by our teachers, we're doing right by our staff, we're doing right by our parents. We need the district to do right by us. Please advocate for us. We need our campus back. I know that so many people in this district are scared to speak up against charters and Prop 39. I know their supporters have deep pockets, but what about the rights of the people of the LAUSD itself? What about our rights to have our children educated well and have that applauded, bolstered and supported? Here you have a school that's not part of that school-to-prison pipeline, so why take from us? There have been whispers that we may get two classrooms back. That would be a start, but we need our whole school. Each and every classroom is important. Imagine how much more amazing Baldwin would be if we had full access to our facilities and could really make our scholars soar. Mr. Carvallo, you showed up at our school unannounced to our principal, our teachers and our parents. What does that say to us? It says that you don't even have the courtesy to allow us the opportunity to show you who we are, to greet you, provide information in our perspective and to ask you questions. You took the opportunity to take photos with our students, yet didn't take the opportunity to speak with our parents, teachers and staff. This was a chance to let us know that you actually care about our plight. I implore you to announce your future visits to any school. Let the LAUSD know you aren't the man in the high castle, but the man who's willing to roll up his sleeves and work with us down in the trenches if necessary. All parents have the right to send their children to the schools of their choice. What I don't understand is what sense it makes for our district to be so closely aligned with charters, it's willing to cannibalize and dissect its own schools. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Kinley LaGrange, are you on the line? Kinley LaGrange, I see you're on the line. Press star six to unmute yourself and you'll have three minutes to speak once you begin. Kinley LaGrange.
Hi there, can you hear me?
We sure can. You have three minutes.
Great, thank you. Distinguished board members, Dr. McKenna, I'm a parent of a first grader at Baldwin Hills Elementary Pilot and Gifted Magnet School and I'm here to urge you to fully, we mean fully, not two classrooms, not one classroom, not three classrooms, fully remove the co-located charter from our stifled campus. Now is the moment. Now is the moment. It's it, this is it. In this moment, you will make a decision. You will make a decision that deeply impacts students, our students at Baldwin Hills. That is a population of more than 80% black students. We are a community school. UCLA researchers have deemed us a bright spot. As Amber Marie said, we are doing it right. We should not be punished for that. We are a place where our children are thriving despite not having all of the opportunities of their non-co-located white counterparts. Many of you today spoke on educational equity, enrichment programs, the need to support marginalized students. Well, Baldwin Hills is where you can turn those words into action. Please, please make Baldwin Hills part of your legacy. Help us achieve the success that our students deserve. Remove New LA Charter from our campus and do not allow another co-location in the future. You have the power to reinterpret the oppressive Prop 39 and do right by our children who are the future leaders. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you for your time. Alan Canterbury, are you on the line? Alan Canterbury, I see you're on the line. Please press star six to unmute yourself and you'll have three minutes to speak once you begin. Mr. Alan Canterbury.
Good afternoon, members of the committee. My name is Alan Canterbury. I'm an attorney, an investigator and a parent of a fifth grade student in LAUSD's historic Baldwin Hills Elementary School, which is a high ability gifted magnet, a pilot school featuring culturally responsive education and a community school. I'm here today to speak about the racist and anti-black co-location of New LA Charter School at Baldwin Hills Elementary School. This co-location has had disastrous effects on our students, our school and our community. The international music program, the science lab, counseling services for the school and community have all been cut because of a lack of space. Younger Baldwin students are frequently having bathroom accidents because either the bathrooms are not available or because older charter students on their lunch periods are bullying the younger kids in the bathrooms. Dudes have to go over five hours without eating every day because the cafeteria is not available at snack because the charter school is using it. My demands here this afternoon are simple. Audit the attendance at New LA Charter School and return two classrooms to Baldwin immediately. Then deny any future co-location at the Baldwin campus by New LA or any other charter school. Why do I call this co-location racist and anti-black? Because of the following. Baldwin Hills is the one high ability gifted magnet elementary school that serves more black students than any other high ability gifted magnet elementary school in LAUSD. And Baldwin Hills is the only high ability gifted magnet elementary school that has a charter co-located on its campus. The only one. Is this a coincidence or is this LAUSD anti-black policy in action? LAUSD statistics show that a black student in LAUSD is three times more likely to have a charter school co-located on its campus than a white student. Is this a coincidence or is this anti-black policy in action? You must vote no on the co-location of LA at Baldwin Hills and prove to us your support for black students because your vote is not happening in a vacuum. Last year, we heard Los Angeles City Council members on tape using racist terms and having racist conversations about depriving black people of political power through district events. And now when we see you making decisions about co-locating a charter school at the only high ability gifted magnet elementary school that happens to be the most black, we have to wonder, are you all having these racist conversations in your bathrooms to deprive black students their educational power through co-location? If you want to prove to us you are not having these conversations, talk is cheap. You are going to need to show us you are here to help. Now I know some of you support black students and families.
Thank you for your time, sir. Thank you for calling in. Xana Gilbert, I see you signed up, but I do not have you on the screen in front of me. Xana Gilbert, I don't, I see that you're not here. Craig Hayden, I see that you're also not on the line. Craig Hayden. Let's see, Evan George, I also see you are not on the line. Evan George. Love Collins, I see you are on the line. Love Collins, press star six to unmute yourself and you'll have three minutes to speak once you begin.
Good afternoon.
Hi.
Can you hear me?
We sure can. You have three minutes.
Source, achieve.lausd.net. And I quote, "It is time for us to intensify the focus on what is most important to our students." is most important to our students and those who support them every single day, to inspire a theory of action that turns the impossible into the inevitable for everyone in the Los Angeles Unified Family," end quote, Superintendent Alberto M. Carvalho, who did not have the decency to stay and listen to his constituents. Distinguished board members, now is the time for you to intensify your focus on Baldwin Hills Elementary for what is most important to the students, an enriched, robust, and fair education, and those who support them every single day, myself, every parent you've heard, and our community, to inspire a theory of action that turns the impossible, protecting Baldwin children and every LAUSD child from forced co-location with a charter school that is oppressive, discriminatory, and demoralizing. While the district, and specifically our renowned board member, Dr. George McKenna, remains silent and unmoved to this point through just this school year where we have tried to repeatedly reach him, see him, speak with him, collaborate with him, we have not prevailed. We urge you, by the precedent set forth by Superintendent Carvallo and posted on the cover page of the LAUSD website, to take every action to remedy the discriminatory and demoralizing effects of the co-location on Baldwin Hills Elementary Campus now and in the future. Please do not hide behind this law. Please do not hide behind your position. Please do not hide any longer, but let your constituents and every child and every parent in LAUSD know that you are fighting for the education that we just heard you guys speaking about. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Karen Morgan, I see that you're on the line. Karen Morgan, please press star six to unmute yourself, and you'll have three minutes to speak once you begin. Karen Morgan.
Hi, can you hear me?
We sure can. You have three minutes to speak.
Okay, I won't take all of that time. Thank you. I am a constituent and a resident and business owner in the Baldwin Hills Unified School District area. And I quote, "It is time for us to intensify the focus on what is most important to our students and those who support them every single day, to inspire a theory of action that turns the impossible into the inevitable for everyone in the Los Angeles Unified Family," end quote, Superintendent Alberto M. Carvalho. Distinguished board members, now is the time for you to intensify your focus on Baldwin Hills Elementary for what is most important to the students, an enriched, robust, and fair education, and those who support them every single day, the parents, the teachers, and the community, to inspire a theory of action that turns the impossible, protecting Baldwin children from forced co-location with a charter school into the inevitable, reclaiming valuable space for music, robotics, science, counseling, and community services. That's LAUSD's oppressive interpretation of Proposition 39 has confiscated. While the district and specifically our renowned board member, Dr. George McKenna, remain silent and unmoved by our continued petition, do not worry, we have found a place to amplify this negligence. Recently, in the LA Times, LA Daily News, ABC Seven News, and most effectively in a well-attended virtual community meeting we hosted for elected officials, community organizations, and activists for civil and racial injustice. We urge you, by the precedent set forth by Superintendent Carvallo and posted on the cover page of the LAUSD website, to take every action to remedy the discriminatory and demoralizing effects of the co-location on Baldwin Hills Elementary's campus now and in the future. I yield back my time.
Thank you for your time. Mr. Kurt Kruger, are you on the line? Kurt Kruger, I see you're on the line. Please press star six to unmute yourself, and you'll have three minutes to speak once you begin.
I welcome you all with great respect and love. My name is Kurt Kruger, founder of the Peacemaker Circles Network and a retired LAUSD teacher and former member of its Physical Education Advisory Board. Today, we are here to propose the creation of a fully funded Office of Climate Education. As you're aware, the climate change is one of the most pressing issues of our time, and it's essential that we take action to prevent the rapid climate change and the resultant sixth mass extinction. Education is the key to addressing this issue. Our populace is vastly ignorant of the issue. We propose that we also set up teams to develop the LAUSD standards for climate education, just as we did for the new physical education in the early 2000s. This will ensure that climate education is integrated into all aspects of the curriculum, from science and math to English and physical education and adult education. In addition, I propose the formation of mastermind groups modeled after the Peacemaker Circles in each high school complex of feeder schools, regional climate mastermind groups, and intra-regional groups. These groups will provide teachers and administrators with the opportunity to share ideas, collaborate, and provide support to one another. Furthermore, as part of the graduation requirement, the service activity could be creating a middle school climate action club at a former middle school. Middle schoolers could also possibly do the same with their elementary school. This guides people into being mentors, just as the elders of indigenous tribes do their youth. Professional development could include week-long trainings in the summer could be given at fairly local retreat centers. LA Unified's Physical Education Team used Thatcher School in Ojai each year to train around 100 to 150 teachers from many regions of LAUSD in the new physical education in the early 2000s and mid-2000s. Now we get to train our entire school district with a massive change as we did when computers, and more recently, online instruction was mandated. Schools themselves would apply regenerative agriculture practices in all outdoor areas. This includes the focus of the Landscape Facilities Division on being environmentally regenerative. Students who graduate from LAUSD would then be prepared to acquire jobs in the new industries and businesses that are created around climate mitigation and justice. By doing so, we can ensure that our students are equipped with the knowledge and skills they need to understand and address the challenges of climate change and to help create a more sustainable future for all. Thank you for your service to a thriving humanity and planet.
Thank you for your time.
God bless.
Malaysia Cowan, you're signed up, but I do not see you online in the list in front of me. Malaysia Cowan. And Carrie Harper Howey, I see you're online. Carrie Harper Howey, please press star six to unmute yourself, and you'll have three minutes to speak once you begin. Carrie Harper Howey, press star six to unmute yourself, and you have three minutes to speak Carrie Harper Howey, it would be a shame to miss you. I see that you are online and ready to talk and unmuted. Carrie Harper Howey, try unmuting yourself one more time. You were unmuted, and now you are muted. Star six. Okay, it looks like that's not working. My apologies. Mr. Tokowski, you signed up. Are you here to speak right now, Mr. Tokowski? Seeing no physical presence of Mr. Tokowski, we are concluded with public comment.
I have a adjournment motion.
Thank you, Mr. McLean. With that, we'll move to our adjournments, and Ms. Goldberg.
Yes, it is with sadness that I would like to adjourn in memory of Dr. Gerardo Felix, or Gerardo Felix, a dedicated and extraordinary teacher at RFK Ambassador School of Global Education. Mr. Felix taught third grade in the Spanish One Way Immersion Program in the Koreatown Pico Union Community of Schools. Mr. Felix was a person of great value and integrity who connected with all members of the school community. His passion for education, social justice, and equity permeated in his classroom and in his interactions with the greater school community. Mr. Felix wore many hats and, over the years, became a key member of the school community as a school site council member, Spanish team lead teacher, lead teacher for after-school intervention, and head coach for their running club. His absence has left a tremendous void. The students, parents, and staff miss him dearly.
Thank you, Ms. Goldberg. Mr. Schmelson.
Yes, and I have the sad duty to report the passing of Dr. Giancarlo Mercado. Mr. Dr. Mercado worked in Human Resources as a coordinator of the Teacher Training Academy and Teacher Growth and Induction Program. He was an AXA Awards recipient at our last awards ceremony as Central Office Administrator of the Year. Giancarlo recently became actively involved with the Human Resources Council and Membership Committee, supporting Karima Fuentes and April Ramos. He will be deeply missed. AXA Region 16 will send out condolences in the form of flowers and a card. Rest in peace, Dr. Mercado.
Thank you, Mr. Schmelson, and we'll adjourn in memory of both those individuals and the recent victims of gun violence as we open the meeting. Our next board meeting is on February 7th, and our next cal will be later in the month and chaired by our very own Mr. Schmelson. So thank you all for a good meeting, the district staff, and the public, and see everyone in a few weeks. Thanks.
Thank you very much.